And I'm going to start the webinar. And I'm going to ask again for Wind Cam for let me know when we've gone live.
Yeah, co-host Brian.
You are a co-host.
Got it.
Ms. Bollinay.
We are live on Wind Cam, Brian.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I want to make a note that while the agenda notes that this meeting will be at Wind Cam due to COVID nineteen closure, it is actually remote tonight because of some members who couldn't be in person. And moving forward, that will be the plan that we will have. If we don't get all of us or most all of us in person, we will go remote for to make the meetings more effective. But if we can get the entire committee in person, I think it's more effective lives in person at Wind Cam. So I want to make that note and we need to make remember to adjust the agenda to indicate that properly as we move forward. I want to walk through the agenda tonight. We have call to order. We have student report. We are both students here and I appreciate you guys coming on a school night. We have public comment after that. We have reports and discussion items. We have a personnel update, your fiscal year twenty one budget update, your projected enrollment for twenty one, twenty two. We have action items, vote to approve minutes, your chair report, superintendent report. We have future agenda items and next meeting dates. So with that, I would like to welcome our two students, Caroline and Evan, and welcome you. Thank you again. I really appreciate you guys taking time out of your evening to come to our meeting and the floor is yours. Welcome. Anxious to hear how things are going.
Thank you. So hi, everyone. From the high school perspective, we are in a bit of a transition. First quarter just ended for us. So all teachers had their first quarter grades in by nine o'clock yesterday. We all got our report cards and now we're starting second quarter, which we're hoping will go very well, of course. We also have, we're working on a student council, working on the upcoming Spirit Week. We are doing a virtual adaptation of Spirit Week, which would normally culminate in our pep rally, which obviously can't happen this year. So we'll be doing a whole host of virtual events, dress up days, including sort of game night. We'll be having some fun events on our Wednesday Zooms before Thanksgiving break. And then we are all looking forward to our Thanksgiving break. And I think I'll pass it off to Caroline for the rest of our day.
Yeah, hi. There's not too much going on at the high school right now, but we were just notified that there will be in-person school pictures that are going to take place starting November thirtieth and they're going to go all the way to December ninth because they're going to split it up between grades on each of the cohort days. So like a cohort will go split between Monday and Tuesday with ninth, tenth grade, eleventh, twelfth grade. And then for the B cohort as well. So that's good that we're going to be able to do that in person and get those in through the yearbook. And then also fall sports are just coming to an end and winter sports, I believe, are going to be starting up. At the moment, they're not, I don't believe they're like canceled. So we're just going to see what happens with all the different sports and their requirements for indoor, outdoor playing. And I think that's it. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much. I'm actually fascinated to hear about pictures because remarkably enough, neither of my children mentioned picture, school pictures to me. So I find it funny. I have to come here to find out about it. So thank you for, you know, maybe they don't want pictures.
I think it's new in the announcements this week. I just saw today too.
Okay, so they haven't been holding it from me. Okay. Does anybody on the committee have any questions or comments for either of our two student representatives? Ms. Bergstrom.
Did I happen to see that the Zen Garden is taking shape at the high?
I know that in the back of the high school where they're doing it, they now have a paved path and there are some rocks around it that are like the formation, but I don't know how far in that process they are.
Do Dr. Evans, do you know when that's going to be finished for the kids? Because what a great space to take like a mask break and things outdoors.
So it's already in use, the first circle that has the stone. They're almost like seats that can be used as seats. I was there today and Mr. Mahoney said that students are already sitting out there for mask breaks. There's also a nice little water feature, which is very soothing. And some plantings and so the grass is finished in that part. The labyrinth is, you know, sort of outlined and ready to for the for the stone to be put on it. But that part hasn't been finished yet and I don't know what the schedule is, but certainly the Zen Garden can be used now. Especially the sort of calm place by the water feature. That circle is finished and I tweeted and put something on Facebook today if people want to see what it looked like. It's also open to the public during non-school hours. So if people wanted to come and check it out and sit there, it's meant to be a community resource as well as all our schools are. But in non-school hours, that would be appreciated.
Nice to see the culmination of a really student-directed, student-led project that has really sort of transformed that part of the high school. So anxious to hear how the kids like it as they get used to it being there.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Are there additional questions from the committee or comments? Seeing none, I have a sort of a follow-up. I know you mentioned that sports were finishing up. You'll forgive me because I forget these things. Are you, either or both of you athletes and what if so, what sports were you competing in this fall?
I played tennis, which is in the spring only, so I didn't have a fall sport.
Okay, thank you.
And I just finished cross-country as a fall sport and I'll be going to Nordic skiing as a winter sport.
Fantastic. Well, I'm glad to hear that we were able to, as a district, have even if not all of our sports, summer sports available this fall. And I hope we can continue that throughout the year, even if it's not all of our sports, but some of our sports, because I know how important they are to so many of our students. So so seeing no additional questions or comments, as always, you're welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting and listen. You also appreciate it. You have want to get homework or get off to dinner. So you're just welcome to stay as long as you want and then just zip off when you need to go. So thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to public comment. I probably sound like a broken record to people who come, but I'll remind everyone that public comment is an opportunity for you, the public, to comment on issues under the purview of the school committee. It's not a question and answer session. It's not a back and forth, but it's a chance for you to tell us what you think and make state your public comment. We will try to limit it to twenty minutes tonight and limit it to three minutes per individual. If someone says something that you totally agree with and don't feel the need to speak afterwards, you don't need to continue speaking, but you're welcome to do so. The way we'll do public comment is we will ask you, all the hands are already lowered, so that's convenient. We'll ask people to raise their digital hands and then we'll call on you one at a time from people who have their digital hands raised, elevate you so you can speak. And then we will return you back into the attendance attendees and move on. So with that, I see Ms. Court has raised her hand. I'm going to try to elevate Ms. Court. You could state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Very well.
Excellent. Thank you. Pamela Court. I'm in precinct five. And I have two kids at the high school. We are fully remote. And I just wanted to extend a thank you. I was thinking this week as, you know, we see these numbers trend upwards in a rather concerning way in our state. I was thinking about how fortunate we are to be able to stay at home, to be able to get a Winchester education. The teachers that my kids have have all been really wonderful. I'm so grateful to them all and I just wanted to say thank you. Because I really am. It's a huge relief and a huge burden off me as a higher-risk person to know that my kids can continue to be educated by the district while we remain in a safer situation for our family. So that's it.
Thank you very much for those very kind words and I'm thrilled that your kids are able to get a quality education despite being at home. And so thank you very much. With that, I will return you to attendees. I will ask if anyone else has any comments or I'll ask the committee to confirm that neither, none of you see any additional hands raised. Seeing none, thank you very much. I will close public comment. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is reports and discussion items. The first report and discussion item is the personnel update. And that, Dr. Evans, I believe you're going to kick that off and I believe you and Ms. Kirby are going to be giving us that update. So I will turn it over to both of you and thank you very much.
Sure. I'm happy to acknowledge the tremendous work and effectiveness that Lori Kirby has brought to this position. She really has faced an unprecedented number of personnel challenges. And we have, I think, been very, very fortunate in our district to have been able to accommodate a fairly significant number of employees who need to work remotely for health-related reasons. A number of employees who need to take family leave for a variety of reasons, including childcare reasons. And we've worked really hard. The principals have done an outstanding job. The directors have done an outstanding job finding qualified, certified leave of absence replacements. But it has not been easy and it has been an incredibly time-consuming and challenging effort. So I just want to acknowledge Lori Kirby for making it look easy, even when it's been very, very difficult. Lori has provided a couple of updates on personnel thus far since the school year began in terms of numbers of leaves, in terms of types of leaves, retirements, et cetera. So there aren't a lot of updates since that time, but I've asked her just to summarize for you any major changes since the last time she provided a written personnel update. And also talk a little bit about as the COVID-related short-term leaves go away in December, what do we anticipate will happen after those leaves expire? So and so I'll turn it over to Lori and then sure she'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Kirby. You are still muted, Ms. Kirby.
All right. Thank you, Judy. And I just want to start by saying this truly has been a team effort and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Diane McCroby and the HR specialist and Nancy Clark, the manager, the payroll manager, who have done a phenomenal job in this ever-changing, constant flurry of activity. And they've just maintained professionalism and treated all with the respect and kindness that that they deserve throughout the process. So a big shout out to them. As Judy mentioned, I want to just again commend the principals, assistant principals, directors for their persistence in seeking out candidates to fill the many vacancies that we had this summer that we continue to have throughout the year. In my humble opinion, the biggest job, the most important job that we have, first and foremost, is making sure we hire staff that are qualified, that are open, have that positive attitude and are ready to take on the many challenges that will come their way. And in this case, so many that we just don't, we cannot predict. And it takes a lot of time. And these principals, assistant principals and directors have done it again and they make it look easy and they clear their agendas and make this a priority. And as a result, given the many challenges that we face, given the competitive nature now of hiring, we've done a pretty good job and have been able to do that. And I'll get on more to what that really looks like in a couple of minutes. But again, going above and beyond to make sure our kids have teachers who are there and qualified to meet their needs. And throughout this journey, we've heard so much about the staff and their hard work and going above and beyond to work together to really support one another so that they can look at the individual students and they can consider their social, emotional wellbeing as well as those academic achievements that we want all of our students to be able to read. And and I think with the many new staff that we have welcomed, a great number of those new staff are brand-new to the field or coming back after a long absence. And these teachers have pulled together to welcome these new staff, to give them the supports, the resources they need so that they have the bigger picture, so they know who we are in Winchester and how we really value the individual students and that idea of making them feel seen and heard, whether they're working remotely or in the hybrid model. So that part of the story is so much fun to tell. And each and every day, I'm in awe of the people that I have the privilege of working with. With that, there have been and will continue to be many challenges as a result of the changes that we have endured throughout the year. And we've all commented on how, whether you've been teaching for thirty years, fifteen years, or this is your first year. It feels like a first year because it's so very different. And we're asking people to do something they've never done before or to take what we started in the spring and really ramp it up to what we know it can be. And that doesn't come without a toll. Our staff is tired. They're showing it in many different ways. And since September sixteenth, our official first start of the school year with students, we have had close to a thousand days of absences that we've needed to fill. And that goes above and beyond the leave of absence of teachers who have taken for a year or those subs that have, I'm sorry, those staff members who have taken an extended leave. People are giving it their all. And again, it just comes to a point where they're just not ready to come and to be their best self for a variety of different reasons. And we have a lot of responsibility as teachers and that prior to a pandemic was awesome. You add a pandemic to it, the health and safety of our students. And again, that takes a real emotional toll on our teachers. They feel responsible and they're doing everything they can to make sure that their students are safe and that they're making good choices and that we're following the guidelines that we know will keep us healthy. And understandably so, they're concerned about their own wellbeing. They go home to families who have many different stories and many different challenges. And they're working really hard and feeling that pressure of making sure they're doing what they know they need to do for our students as well as balance what they need to do for their families at home. Our special ed positions that we've had open throughout the year, whether it be through parental leaves or just FF-CRA leaves, continue to be very challenging to fill. And I give Pam Gerard and the special ed supervisors and the building principals a tremendous amount of credit for really looking at the staff that we have, consider who our students are and what they need and do their very best to take what we know already and try to make it work. And then hire for some of those other positions that may not need or that don't necessarily have the understanding of the students that we need to service. So again, I think what they have done and thought about as far as reaching out to many different places, trying to find highly qualified staff, looking at agencies out there to give us time with consultants has been a challenge because as I said, and as we all know, this is a very competitive time for teachers. And there are not many people who are interested, willing, able to take on these short, long-term subs. So we continue to be up against that. And then we have ESPs and we have reading specialists and SEL coaches and some of the elementary specialists, art, music, PE, library media specialists and principals, in fact, that are covering the absences that we have because we simply don't have the ISS. And it's not for lack of trying, but given the numbers that I just gave you, just keeping up with the demand of the day-to-day, you know, sick days, personal days, vacation days, in a good year is challenging, but this year it's becoming impossible. And people are doing it. They're doing it willingly. They're doing a tremendous job, but something has to give. So when we think about principals, well, they're instructional leaders. So do they want to be there with those kids? Absolutely. Is that probably the highlight of their day? Without question. But going into classrooms and giving feedback to those new staff, give feedback to those LOAs subs that are in there so that they know that they're on the right track or giving them feedback about natural next steps or letting them know that these resources, these supports are out there. They're not able to do that with the consistency that they've had in the past. And the same holds true. We have reading specialists out there. And again, who's more qualified to go in and take over a hybrid class or go online and do the remote learning? But something has to give. And so if we're looking at students who, you know, in the very limited time that we have together are not getting the services they need because we have to make sure we cover the larger masses. And then we have just the simple schedules and they're not simple by any stretch of the imagination. They're more complex than ever. We've got a remote schedule going on. We've got a hybrid schedule. We've got a four-day-a-week schedule. And we're asking staff to cover, to fill in for these positions. And again, they're doing it and they're doing it willingly and they're doing a fantastic job. However, things are starting to, you know, cracks are starting to develop because they simply can't do it all. And I, you've heard it and again, I feel it like I need to say this and I really shouldn't have to, but I feel like it can't be said enough. There is not anyone that I've talked to throughout this journey and I've heard some really challenging, difficult stories from people and going through a lot, but they're so committed to our students here in Winchester. It really is an awesome experience to be part of it, as difficult as these stories are. And I can tell you that every single person that I've talked to as individuals, any meeting that I've been in talking about hiring practices, sustaining them, giving them the PD they need, talking about curriculum, there is not one person, and I mean this, I cannot think of one person who hasn't said, we want to be here. We want to be with the kids. But there are things that are making it really challenging for them to just carry on in the way that they would in that typical year. So I'll go on and just say that last time I spoke with you, we talked about Spanish being a real issue. And Anna Toroni went above and beyond and just thinking outside the box. We exhausted our agencies, we universities, all of her connections that she has within her world language group. And as a result of all of that, Anna came up with the idea that we go to online classes for a few of our Spanish. So beginning this week or early next week, we'll have an honors class beginning online. And we're in the final stages of giving the college prep students that experience that they're eager to participate in. I will say with that, students had the option. They were able to say, yes, I'll take the online course this year or know that next year we would work to fit this into their schedule to make it happen for them, give them the experience that they wanted. And just to kind of run through again, as Judy said, we have those leaves coming back. So some of the leaves, twelve-week leaves, I should say, that the eight people that were out on that twelve-week leave, they will start to come back this week and the beginning of December. So in total, we had eight staff that went out on the twelve-week leave. As of now, three of the teachers are committed to returning. We had a sped administrator who is returning. And two out of the four ESPs that are out on leave will be returning. The other two decided to resign. Since we last spoke, we have a fifth-grade teacher who's retired. And again, the rumors are out there. There are potential for a couple more and I would not be surprised within the next week if we don't hear from them. We have many people who are out on parental leave. Great news. They're welcoming new children into their family. So between now and January, we will be welcoming, I'm sorry. We have many, we have about seven coming back before we leave for the winter break. But beginning next week and through January, we'll have seven more teachers go out on parental leave. And then beginning in January, we'll have eight more. And that is on top of six full-year, long-term parental LOAs. I share this with you just so that you know the magnitude of staff that are temporary and the amount of work that mentors, coordinators, directors, assistant principals, principals are all doing to make sure that their transition into our school is as smooth as it can be. And just I'll end on just the different vacancies that we have. As Judy has so kindly put out there in so many different ways, we have ISS needs, you know, building subs that would help us tremendously. And we've been thinking, putting out, putting feelers out there, but as I stated, that is a challenge. And then we have a special ed LOA that is due to a parental leave. She went earlier than expected and that continues to be a challenge to fill. And again, Pam has been working with the supervisor and Andrea to try to create a plan, work with different agencies. But right now, we are kind of using the resources that we have to make that work. And then at McCall, we have a special ed LOA that's going to be starting in January. And again, I was just on the phone this afternoon with James and just coming up with different plan about what it would look like if we use different staff, how we use them and then what would we need to fill in place up. So in this story, I want you to hear first and foremost, our teachers are so committed to our students in Winchester. You have an administrative team that is doing yeoman's work, make sure they hire people who are going to hear us and understand who we are and what we value and are open to working with us to collaborate, to give what we need. And it's messy and I don't see it getting any better. And I, we, all of us appreciate the support that you've given us up to this point and we know that that will continue. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. That was amazing. How much work you can encapsulate into five minutes of speaking? How much work is behind all of that? Questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For some reason, I can't raise my hand on Zoom tonight. Thank you for giving me a shot. So I guess I had three, three comments or questions. So Ms. Kirby, to your point about a thousand days beyond those sort of planned absences, that seems like a lot. But when I think about the number of teachers we have in the district, and I couldn't, forgive me, I couldn't remember if that was a thousand days, teachers and staff-wide or just among teachers, but it still comes out to around, what, between two and two and a half days per employee? If you wanted to average it that way, which actually in the midst of a global pandemic, does not really seem unreasonable to me. And I wonder now that we're rolling into the winter months and we're seeing just general concern about what we're in for. and we're seeing just general concern about what we're in for, um, does it not seem reasonable to you that you're going to see at least another thousand days of absences over a similar time period? If not more? And if that's the case, this is sort of a pivot to Ms. Whittamore and her presentation later in the meeting. But are you, are you, um, are you extrapolating from your experience thus far with those thousand days in terms of our budget planning for the rest of the year?
So yes, that, that's a great question and, and you bring up a great point. So, um, what I will say is, you know, about 1% right now of those are COVID-related, those thousand. And in the past two weeks, you can just start seeing that escalate with all the different quarantine. Um, and certainly Ellen and I are talking all the time and Nancy Clark is sharing. Um, you know, we're all kind of working through this together because of, um, you know, the many changes and, and the different rules and who's paying and, and how it should be paid out.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, you said it's very, very competitive time for teachers. And I would assume it's even more competitive for, um, public school district technology directors. So where do we stand? I know, I didn't hear that in your list of vacancies. Um, we tried to fill it earlier this year, either to you or Dr. Evans. Where do we stand on that? Um, I, I can imagine one might say, maybe this becomes a backburner issue. But on the other hand, I can't imagine a, a time where that position could be even more useful. So, um, what's the thinking from administration and what are we doing about that right now?
So, uh, that's a pending personnel issue that I can't really discuss, um, in a public meeting. But I'd be happy to talk with you, um, offline about that to answer. We do fully expect to have a tech director this year. Um, and we, um, as always, Jen Ellen Emma has jumped in again to provide extraordinary leadership in technology, as she had been in the absence of a tech director. But how soon we're going to fill that position? Or, um, what the status is of the current person who's holding the position? I can't speak to in public.
So then, and again, my last question, and this is kind of a tag team with Ms. Whittamore. But overall, we're seeing an increase in personnel cost at the high school of around like 4.3% over last year. And when you look at some of the different line items like social studies is up 4.8%. Um, uh, science was up maybe around 5%, English was down by 1%. Yeah, I thought it was interesting, Ms. Kirby, were math, math teachers, it's almost 16% increase over last year. So I really felt like it was more appropriate for you to ask this question. Did we just hire, did we hire a bubble of math teachers? Or did we have some sort of unique costs come up in terms of individuals and steps and columns and education and so forth? I was just curious if you could fill us in on that.
Yeah, uh, you are so good, Chris, at those details. I need you in my life. Um, yes, there are many, um, unique situations, some personnel. So that, that, that spoke to, um, the increase. But, um, yes, I, I think that's, that's the best I can say to that. But there was nothing, um, you know, I want to say, I said this in the fall, that the directors and building principals are being so mindful of what that budget is and taking a look at the positions that we had open in math and using, again, the support that we knew and trying to, we put a lot into these people when they come, we want to keep them. Um, but it, it's just other unique situations that happened that made that increase.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask, because it's, as a line item, it's an outlier. Um, frankly, I'd be more concerned if we were spending 50% less on math teachers for obvious reasons, uh, need to invest in math, but it stood out to me. I'm sorry, did Dr. Evans, were you going to say something?
Dr. Evans.
Just to jump in, and I think Ellen can, can verify this. The, I'm not sure that that actually reflects, uh, you would assume that that means we either hired more expensive math teachers or hired more of them. Um, in some cases, uh, there were shifts from middle school folks who went to the high school or vice versa in some department areas. Or we had allocated a position originally in one place and it really ended up in a different place. Uh, that's particularly true at the elementary level. So when Ellen goes through her budget, you'll see lots of variances at every school and, and a variety of departments and places. Um, but we had a couple of middle school folks who were experienced who moved up to the high school this year. That looks like, um, there is a significant increase in cost for that department. But in reality, it's just shifted from middle to high school, for example. Um, and so what I can say for the principals is, you know, the target that we have in our budget is maybe Masters One or Masters Two for anybody new who comes in. Um, and, uh, we rarely exceed that with our hires. Um, and that keeps us in line with what we had budgeted. But in some instances, we hired a new science director, six through 12. Um, that person was a very experienced person. Sometimes with world language, we have to go above, um, our budget target. Um, and a lot of times, these are replacement positions and not brand-new positions. Uh, sometimes, um, we have to hire a little bit higher for special education for us, especially for specialized learning program. Um, but for the most part, if there are higher costs at the high school, they're often offset somewhere else. So Ellen, can you, can you help me out with any of that? Because I think it's an important, I don't want to, I don't want people to think that we're hiring above budget. Overall, we're hiring out or below budget.
Right, we, to, um, to worry Kirby's point, um, and also, uh, one of the variables that Mr. Nixon mentioned was, you know, in terms of column moves and salary across, on the salary schedule. That did occur, um, we, we definitely had, um, a robust, um, number of, um, individuals that moved on the salary, um, chart. And I'm looking right now, um, at the budget book. Um, and there wa, there was considerable movement, um, that occurred within the math department at the high school.
Uh, so you're saying people get more degrees?
Yes.
More credits? And then it moved across the salary schedule?
So in addition to their COLAs and things like that, they wound up, uh, moving across.
So when we build the budget, we put a certain amount aside for column moves? And then it gets allocated, um, around this time, um, for, to the individual, uh, department or school that where the person resides, right?
Correct, that's why we wait until after, um, all, everyone has been able to, um, submit their column of documentation. And we do one, um, cleanup following that, um, after the end of October.
Thank you.
Uh, I would encourage, um, Mr. Nixon or anybody else who wants to sort of do a deep dive into, um, sort of more granular level to, um, meet with Ms. Whittamore or Ms. Kirby. Because obviously, we're not going to talk about individual teachers here. Um, but that's certainly something that if, if any of the committee members want to have a better understanding with, of, they can, they can reach out to them, sort of not, not what we do in these committee meetings. So, but of course, um, are there additional questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Marshant?
Thank you. Um, as, as Ms. Kirby was talking, I was reminded that we spend, um, about $10,000 less per pupil than districts like Weston, whom we are quite competitive with in terms of academic achievement and, um, the socioeconomic status of the town. Um, and so it, it, it's just mind-blowing that the difference is almost double what we spend in per pupil spending. And so of course, we're going to be facing so many, um, issues and restrictions. And I'm also very, um, proud of our staff and our teachers and what you've been able to accomplish with such restricted and limited funds. And, um, it, it just, I, I really want us to, um, remember as parents in the community how little room we have to maneuver in this pandemic because of financial limitations. My question is, um, I'm really concerned about the exhaustion and the morale of our staff and teachers. And, um, this is unlike anything where we have families a lot more involved, more broadly speaking, in our children's education. And so we are going to be, of course, giving, um, or creating more, um, communication points with our staff. And so all of these things, I can't even imagine how exhausting it must be. So are there things we can do to be more proactive around our teachers' mental health and wellbeing, our staff's mental health and wellbeing? Are there counseling services? Have we surveyed the staff? On what, what can we do within our means? Or as a community, how can we as a community step up and provide for our staff and teachers?
I think that's a gr, a great question. And I think, you know, we consider that as we're thinking about the PD that we offer. Um, we're considering that as we thought about the evaluation process this year and what it looked like. Um, because we need to now more than ever, but I think we all believed we needed to, you know, every year you get better, every day you get better. But really hear the teachers and, and make the, their voice heard. And, um, not just heard, but what are we doing with what they're telling us? And what does, you know, our structure look like? And as we're thinking about department meetings and we're thinking about grade level meetings, really adjusting them to meet what the teachers say they need in that moment in time. So I have to say that the Wednesdays, afternoons, where they have had time to collaborate across districts, at the elementary level, at the departments and grade levels within the buildings, and then individual time is making the world of difference because it is giving them time to decompress. It is giving them the time they need to share their, you know, struggles and to share their successes so that they can learn from each other. So, um, you know, beyond that, I, I wish we had the, the magic bullet. But I think, you know, we're trying, uh, to do our best to make sure that we're responding to their needs.
Uh, Dr. Evans?
So, uh, a couple of things that I think have been really helpful in that I'm going to urge the community to, um, hear tonight that are hard to hear. And so, uh, one thing is that, especially at the elementary level, the social emotional learning coaches have been a great source of support for the elementary staff. Um, they're just naturally attuned to that, they work across, um, more than one school. Um, and while they are helping to support the teachers as they support the students, they're also supporting the staff. And I think they're putting out, um, lots of encouraging, useful resources, um, encouraging teachers to focus on some self-care. Um, and so that's been really gratifying. Jason and I had a conver, this very conversation the other day, um, to see how we can, um, leverage other resources from six through 12. Because I think, um, the counselors at those levels are used to supporting students and teachers individually, but not so much publicly. I think the other thing, um, that we need to acknowledge is that in these difficult times, I'm seeing, um, many, uh, communications from parents who are incredibly grateful, as you heard Ms. Court say tonight. Grateful we've been able to stay open so long, grateful, um, that the teachers have been, um, bending over backwards for students to try to make it work. But we have to acknowledge that the strain on families, um, who are supporting children for now many, many months, even the students who are hybrid, um, who are, um, sometimes facing difficulties balancing, um, their own health or their, their elderly parents' health or their work responsibilities, that people are just exhausted and they're angry and they're frustrated and they're tired of it. And so what happens, Jason, Jason would, would teach me this. When people are exhausted at their wits' end, frustrated, uh, they can't learn. Um, they can't empathize with other people and sometimes they lash out. And so, um, what our teachers need most of all is a little forebends, a little kindness, a little understanding, a quick word of appreciation. Um, and that will fuel them so that they can keep going. Um, in my, uh, school visits recently, I have just seen some amazing things in, happening in classrooms. But to teach a classroom where you have to keep kids six feet apart from one another with masks on and wash their hands, I stood at the, in the high school as students came in from outdoor lunch and every person who passed, Mr. Mahoney reminded them to sanitize their hands. You know, all of these extra things that we normally wouldn't have to do are just exhausting, along with the worry that we're going to get sick or, or some student is going to get ill. And so, um, what we really need is a little more kindness and understanding, particularly for the teachers. And so if I could just put the plea out, we know parents are angry, we know they're frustrated. I'm getting fairly regular communication where people are saying, "This isn't going to, this is just isn't working, you need to have the kids back full and in person." Um, and we're working towards that when it's safe to do so. And I wish I could make it happen faster. The other thing is that our teachers, our budget was fairly limited and we put most of it towards, uh, PPE and technology and, um, flexi and tents and, and a variety of other things, air purifiers. But teachers asked for a number of other things that would really help them teach both remotely and in-person in, in terms of software, um, other kinds of technology devices. And so we were able to, um, the central office team was able to collect those requests from teachers and put them in the CARES grant that the town is, is, um, managing. And we got word today that we can now order those things. And so for teachers who are looking for specific software or a piece of technology that they normally wouldn't use, but that would be really hu, helpful now. Because every single teacher in a district is teaching both remotely or all remotely. And many are teaching hybrid as well, because they'll teach on Wednesdays. And so, um, some of the software that they've asked for, um, is, um, not typically within our reach of the budget. But, but we also purchased a lot of resources for, uh, readers and writers workshop, um, videos, some video support materials and so forth. And so we're funding a lot of these through the grants. And so more, um, more investment in the things that the teachers say that they need has been beneficial. But, uh, Jason will be presenting on December 1st about students' mental health needs. Um, and we'll continue to work with the teachers to support their needs as well. But as a community, I would just put in a plea for even, I know everyone's exhausted and I know we're frustrated, but if we could just be a little more patient and kind to one another. Um, I think that the teachers can, uh, can regroup when that happens. Some of the communication that I'm seeing is not kind. And so, yeah, so that's sort of my plea. Easy to do.
Right.
Um, I think before you press send on that email. And I think that would go a long way.
So, uh, so something important is being, you know, outlined here is that we all have great intentions, whether it's for our family's wellbeing, our students' education, uh, as community members and neighbors. But the impact that is being, um, done can sometimes be harmful because of how desperate we feel to get things the way we need them in this moment. And so, um, one of the most powerful things Lori just said was that everyone has a story and everyone has a complex, you know, background. And that's what they're bringing into the school buildings. And I think as much as we, parents, have our own stories and our own perspectives, I would encourage all of us to put on, um, the shoes of a teacher or the staff members, the superintendent, all of you, to put on, to, to put on your perspective for a minute and to see what load you're carrying day in and day out. At the same time that you're protecting our children, their health and their wellbeing. They don't, they, I feel that the students, especially my own, are insulated from any trauma or negative impacts because of how well the teachers are finessing their interactions with the students. And so I applaud all of you for this immense amount of work. And I really, I want to open the, the communication lines between our families and our staff, of course. We're a public institution. But at the same time, let's, let's be more thoughtful and let's be more proactive. Um, I love seeing, for example, the Lynch Parent Association. Um, every so often, they bring coffee and creamers and stuff for the teachers to, to see that we are so grateful for them. And I want to see that broader. And if there are things that teachers need, I would like us to reach out to our community and say, "Hey, we don't have this in our budget, but can you fundraise for this, that, or the other?" And so, um, I, I just want to show my own appreciation and, and hope that families can see how hard people are working. Um, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um, additional questions from Ms. Bergstrom?
Um, I, first of all, um, Ms. Kirby, I don't think you should sell yourself short in the detail-oriented, uh, right, frame because I think keeping track of all of the different leaves and the needs of the teachers, particularly at this time, is a tremendous amount of work. So, um, So we thank you for being the gatekeeper of that information and making sure that everybody is getting what they need in terms of leaves and filling positions and just making sure that every day, I'm sure it's comforting to our principals to know that they have the staff they need to run their buildings and have the kids taken care of for the day. So please know that we do appreciate you for that as well.
Thank you.
I heard a number of leaves coming up. I heard a number of special education leads. And I think that's one thing that we haven't talked a lot about yet is just how we're doing with our special education staffing. I know that last spring, you know, when we were in the middle of the pandemic, it became a lot harder to deliver services and the hybrid model and the remote model. And putting all those things together doesn't make it easy, especially when we're down special education staff. So I guess I'm curious to know, and also an incredibly hard position to fill because of the unique nature of some of the skills that are needed in those positions. So I guess I'm concerned and interested to hear if we need to be putting aside more in our special education, particularly the special education personnel budget, to be able to sort of buffer ourselves for what we need. And it sounded like we're using some outside contractors as well, which I know Ms. Gerard has said in the past can tend to either work to our financial benefit or sometimes it is even more expensive. So maybe this is a Pam slash Lori question, but how are we on that? What do we need to plan for? What can we do to help you?
Either Ms. Gerard or Ms. Kirby want to jump right in?
I can jump in. So again, the one position, so we have two positions that have been challenging. But we had a psychologist at the high school that is out on parental leave. We had hired an LOA early on in the summer and then it didn't work out. And so again, people have stepped up. The counselors have taken on different pieces and parts so that the kids are connecting with people that they know. So that's important first and foremost. And then the testing has been, you know, an outside consultant has been used to help with that testing. The middle school is tricky. Again, James and his team there has had a good amount of turnover with these leaves. And so the most pressing issue right now is the LOA that's happening in January. Again, we have a little bit of time and I know that, again, we talked to Pam today and, you know, we'll share this with Judy. But budget could be a factor as we go forward because as you're well aware, we're paying for the, you know, parental leave, a part of that, and then we have to pay for the sub. So we do have to, you know, consider that. And that's when we keep Judy and Ellen in the loop so that, you know, we're all understanding what doctor constraints are. But first and foremost, how do we get the kids what they need now?
Right. And I know we, and maybe I'm not understanding the parameters of it right, but we do have the Special Education Reserve Fund also. Is that, Dr. Evans or Ellen, would that be able to pay for staffing where we defined ourselves short in the special education area?
So I think by, and Ellen can jump in. I think when it was set up, it was for unanticipated special education expenses that weren't, that we couldn't budget for. And we still have a lot of moving parts around each of our kind of special grants that have come in, the CARES grant and our own grant. We're still looking at circuit breaker reimbursement percentages. There are a lot of moving parts when it comes to special education expenses. What do you put in a grant? We put some of the unanticipated personnel additions into the grants, the large grants, both our grant, our COVID grant and the CARES grant. And Ellen, if, when we get to the budget update for FY21, Ellen has pretty significantly increased from the personnel variances, the amount available for contracted services in special education. So at this point, and I always say at this point because things could change, I think we're in good shape even with the additional use of contracted services for, particularly for evaluations, special education evaluations. And there are some positions for which we can hire contracted services. We often work with Walker Partnerships or other organizations for students who might have a need for some additional services. The other area that's been difficult to staff and that could continue to be difficult to staff if we have any more leaves would be the full remote positions. And the student, a lot of the students in the full remote program have very significant needs and receive a lot of services. And so that's been incredibly challenging. But I guess what I would say is Ellen can kind of give her November preview for where we are. There's a lot of school year left. But I think even with some additional special education hiring that may come above budget and even with some contracted services additions, I think we've, we're recommending some line item transfers that will cover what we need for the foreseeable short-term future at least. So, but we could tap into the reserve if we needed to, but at this point I don't anticipate we'll need to because we have, we have very ample circuit breaker reserves that we're planning to use for budget planning purposes for FY22. So as we start that budget, if we spend those down too much, that'll have an impact on how much we ask for from the town for FY22. Ellen, what have I, anything I've forgotten? Because I think Michelle's question is a good one, it's personnel shifts that can have a dramatic impact on the overall budget.
So it's an excellent point, and if everyone's all right with it, I'd like to just real quickly talk about special education, especially the professional services line. When we did do the budget for FY21 a year ago, we had realigned the professional services line to bring it into the funding for it in, into where it should, really would it, how it should have been funded in prior, previous years. That line had been over expended historically, so we increased it for FY21 to $700,000. Because in the prior years, in FY19, we spent $691,000, and in FY20, we spent $628,000. Year-to-date, we have spent a small amount from that line, and we have slightly less than half of it encumbered, which, when you look at your budget report, shows that there's still a significant amount of money that's not encumbered. Pam and I meet almost daily in the morning to talk about all things special ed, professional services, tuitions, things of that nature. We are very fortunate with the CARES grant from the town that we are able to allocate to that grant unanticipated, you know, things related to COVID. So for professional services or testing that is related, that is related to COVID because we, the individual is out on a leave of absence, we're actually able to allocate those expenditures to the grant. Anything from September through, actually even going back, you know, to the summer to December 30th, we were able to allocate that to. So Pam and I actually have a meeting for tomorrow afternoon to talk about what has been expended so far and what she has encumbered to do some journal entries and moving things around. So that will provide us with, with some relief. I have also, if you look at the long-term sub-line on the budget report, it is 111-51205. I had increased that line by, and there's an available balance now of $250,000. That is in, was based upon conversations that Lori and I have had about just the changes that are going to be with leaves of absences, additional leaves happening, you know, as we get into December and January, as well as some positions that remain unfilled that we may need to look to put a long-term sub in. We do have money in that line that I'm recommending a transfer into to keep us in a, in a position that we would have those, the funding in reserves for the long-term subpositions that Lori has had, has on the horizon. And as Lori mentioned, I mean, we're all, every day, talking about what positions are out there, who's where, what's going on, really, considering we're all working remotely and, you know, and limited interactions. We're not all in the same office, you know, two or three times a day. You know, it's constant. Every morning I'm with Pam and talking about special ed. Lori and I are constantly circling back with each other. And Lori has really done a great job with all these COVID leaves, keeping everybody straight because I think last week I asked her about the same person about four or five times because I couldn't keep the person straight. So it's just, there's just, you know, and to Judy's point, there's just a lot of moving parts, especially with special ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmore.
I just want to put out there, and again, I just want to make sure this is understood. We have, are having difficulty filling these positions. So we have reached out to the agencies. There's no one there. So right now we have someone at Ambrose that has been out since the beginning of November. And again, we're piecing it. And hopefully we'll have a plan in place for that January and using the staff that we have. Because I mean it when we say we've posted in all different places and the candidates just aren't there. We've reached out to agencies and we're all tapping in to the agencies from around the, you know, Commonwealth. So there's no one there.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Lori, do we have the ability to, for ISS staff to pay more than we're currently paying? And would that be of any benefit?
And I, I think we are comparable to our surrounding communities. And with, you've all have done a great job listening and understanding that. And every year that I've been in this role, you've increased it. I think it's just bigger than that. It's people want, you know, wanting to take the risk to come on in for a short time too. And our ISS are in the most cohorts during the course of the day, the week. So it's a risk that people are weighing. So I don't think we can throw money at that. I think Judy has been very open, understanding and thinking about the long-term subs. So those that have been in for longer than four weeks, really taking a look at that. If we can get someone with experience, can we go above that rate that we now have set? So, you know, it's within her right and she's been doing that and that's been making the difference.
Right, because I'd be concerned about, it sounds like there's a lot of demand. And I want to make sure that when we do get good ISS staff, that we're able to keep them. So I wanted to make sure that there was nothing to do as a committee to help you all out to do that because it sounds like keeping staff is our biggest problem at the moment with being able to keep the teachers sane and happy and keep kids in school. So I just want to make sure that we haven't, as a committee, missed anything that we could be helping you.
No, that's great, Michelle. We appreciate that.
And if you don't mind, Ms. Kirby, if I may tag along to sort of the follow-up before I go to anybody else. One of the things that we have been saying as a committee and as a district is that we lack staff, space, and finances to expand significantly. And so I sort of have a hypothetical for you, and I'm sure you'll hate hypotheticals. If I told you that we needed to hire 10 K to third-grade teachers and we needed them in two weeks, are there 10 K to third-grade teachers that you would be willing to put in a classroom to teach our students that we could get?
I can answer that so quickly? No. Before, I would have said absolutely without question, we'll put up a K through five. And I'm not kidding you, in 10 minutes, we would have had over 400 applicants. I just met two weeks ago with the HR just in the middle set. And we were talking about just this issue, and they had first-grade openings. Like that is like, ooh, the quintessential job at the elementary level. No one's, no one's applying. So it's, it's really not just a Winchester, it's a Lexington, it's a Newton, it's a Maro. I mean, it's, it's across the Commonwealth.
Thank you. That's helpful because I think sometimes I'm not sure that members of the public, I mean, could we just talk about not having adequate staffing, space, or finances? And even if we had more money, we can't necessarily get the staffing we need. And if we had space, which we might have some space here or there, we don't have teachers to be in those spaces. So I just think that's important, something that sometimes I think we talk in generalities. And I think hearing you say that you are having trouble hiring these people, these teachers, these people that we would be willing to have in our classrooms is just, I think it's important to repeat that over and over again. So thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
My apologies for cutting in line. Is there other additional questions, Ms. Bulnes?
Thank you. I just had a quick one. You had mentioned, Ms. Kirby, that we have, although we have several teachers coming back starting next week, we also have seven going out and then another eight going out after January or from January. And I'm just wondering, with our long, with our ISS long-term substitutes, do we, are we able to cover those 15 teachers at this point? Or are we still working to be able to cover those?
Yeah, so the long-term subs are different. So, and again, we're looking at certifications. And so that is different from the day-to-day ISS, the building substitutes that we have that are covering the sick or the vacation or the personal days. So yes, with the exception of the two special ed, those are the outstanding, the only outstanding. So we've been keeping on top of that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other question I have was just more of curiosity. You had mentioned that with the Spanish teacher at the high school, Ms. Terone had, or had, or had found an online class for the honors class. And is that being, how is, are they, are we funding the online class?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So we'll, we'll fund for that. They pay individually. And in the past, Anna has used this program and just had great success with it. And she was looking at a different program because there were different needs with the college. So again, that could be up and running within the next couple of weeks as well.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that, Brian?
Yes, Ms. Bergstrom.
Are there, Dr. Evans, that's actually a really neat option. When we talked about kids finding individual pathways, I didn't know we might have to go to COVID to find it. But are there other classes that the high school is looking at like that? Where we might be short-staffed in the second semester that we could set ourselves up to be able to provide that in budget for it now?
So it's a very expensive option because it's several hundred dollars per course per student, all of which was unbudgeted. So in this instance, it's probably going to be about $35,000 or $40,000 of a cost to fulfill the requirements for these, these students who otherwise would not be able to take Spanish. So in general, it's not, it's not a viable option to expand opportunities. What we've told high school students is that we'll do our very best to meet their course requirements that will also try hard to offer the things that they would like to take, but that are not mandated as part of graduation requirements. Something as important as oral language, which is, I think, one of the five core academic areas. We wanted to be sure that we supported these students with very high-quality college kind of level courses, particularly for the honor students. And so we don't have the resources to expand that based on interest, but certainly if there were students who needed it to fulfill a graduation requirement, we'd take a look at that as an option.
But there aren't any right now that, that Ms. Kirby or you anticipate that there's going to be a teacher that's unavailable at the high school that we would need to prepare for that ahead of time?
Not, not that I know of. I mean, I think that the question, I mean Karen's question about seven people going out, you know, and then eight more people going out, in general, those are all related to childbirth. And we can plan ahead for that. And often we have a leave of absence replacement who handles a leave for one teacher and is certified in the same area and then handles the second leave. And so there's, you know, it's fortuitous that we can, you can keep people employed who are good leave of absence replacements. Some of them are, sometimes it's, you know, surgery or something, some other medical leave that would require a short-term leave of absence replacement. The one that is most challenging is when we have a teacher whose child has to go full remote with no notice or somebody who has a medical issue with no notice and trying to find those replacements quickly. Naturally, parents feel frustrated that their children are not getting the usual five-day-a-week experience as it is and to have to lose any days at all is, you know, heartbreaking. And so... And so as the unanticipated absences crop up, those are the hardest to fill. When people retire unexpectedly or resign or take a leave of absence. The pregnancy-related, the childbirth-related, you know, we know generally well in advance and can provision for those. Lori, am I right on that? Any?
Right on.
So just remembering that teachers are parents and family members too.
Right.
Get to be parents too. And it's, and it's a joyful, in 2020, the birth of a child is a joyful thing. And provides a lot of hope for all of us that this will all get better soon. And
Ms. Bulnes.
Just one more question with respect to Spanish. So have, has Mr. Tarone been able to fill the class? Or I know that we had said that some students might be taking classes like from community colleges or other available, or other items. And I'm not sure if their schedules might change or if, or if they're jumping in.
No, they are eager, ready, willing, and they're, they want it, they want to begin.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, I want to thank you again, Ms. Kirby. And I want to give a shout out to the teachers of Winchester who have done an amazing job. I always hate to make it personal, but my eldest daughter has had three different English teachers over the course of the first two months. And it's been a seamless transition as teachers came and went. And each and every one of them were very professional. I'm very impressed. And I'm always amazed by the teachers in Winchester. And I shouldn't be amazed. I'm always impressed is a better way of putting it. And I appreciate all the work you're doing behind the scenes. And I'm glad you got a chance to be in front of the scenes today, telling the world what it looks like being behind the scenes. So thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the fiscal year 21 budget update. For that, we have Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittamore. I would like to point out to the committee before I turn it over to you, Ms. Whittamore, that through a mistake on the part of the chair, we do only have this as a discussion item, not an action item. If we need to vote to make transfers tonight, I'll let Ms. Whittamore discuss this in a second. We can have, I would entertain a motion to suspend our rules and vote on this tonight since it's been noticed in the agenda. But I want to just point that out while we're having the conversation so that you're all aware of that. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Whittamore.
Thank you. Including in your packets this evening, there is a copy of the FY21's year-to-date budget report for the operating budget, as well as the operate, a summary of the budget report. This report represents activity through November 12th. There is a total unencumbered balance of $3,123,226. This balance was calculated based upon all known personnel costs at this time. To give you some perspective on the unencumbered balance, last year in FY20, this time when I provided the committee with the budget report, there was an unencumbered balance of $3,461,166. And when I provided the committee with the report in November during FY19, there was $2,716,601 remaining unencumbered. I'd like to just also, as you're looking at the expense lines, as well as the unencumbered salary lines, we still have a little more than seven and a half months left of the fiscal year and the school year. So we still, from my perspective, are on target with our spending. We have scrubbed the salary lines. Like I said, and like Ms. Kirby has said, we have been going through, making sure we're tracking all the leaves, making sure we know who's in, who's out, who's where. And that we've been very conservative. I've been very conservative in making sure that we have additional money transferred into the long-term sub-line as a placeholder for the long-term subs that, that we have coming in and going out, as well as looking at the special education lines for tuition and professional services with Ms. Gerard daily to make sure that there isn't anything that we're missing, that we know who's, what's going on with all the students that are on her radar. So we really have been working very hard to make sure that, especially during these uncertain times with COVID, that we're making sure that we're, you know, keeping track of, of our expenditures and being very cautious with our spending.
Thank you, Ms. Whittamore. As far as, before I take questions from the committee, can you let the committee know whether you need action tonight? Whether it would be helpful to have action on this tonight? Or whether you would prefer we have it wait for actions for the coming, the next meeting on December 1st? Just where you're standing on that? So, so the questions can be colored by that.
For me, it would be very helpful. If action could occur this evening, a budget transfer request is required to adjust the budgeted amounts to equal amounts in all budget lines. So it would, it would be helpful for me, however, if the committee is not comfortable or committee members would like to meet with me to go over specific lines. I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Whittamore. And that's helpful. I would open up the questions or comments from the committee. Ms. Marshon.
I just was wondering, Mr. Vanelia, if you'd like the motion now for us to suspend our rules in order to be able to vote tonight, just to get it out of the way?
You know, I don't know. I don't know.
I'll hold off then.
While we hold off and just wait and see where we stand at the end of our conversation, and then we can have the motion. That requires a two-thirds majority to pass, which is four of the five of us if we're all present. So I appreciate the offer. I think just when we get, get a feeling of everybody's comfortable, we can make that decision at that time. So.
And then if I can make
Absolutely.
It's more of a broad question. So that, to me, this unencumbered amount means we're in a very healthy place as long as more dramatic things don't happen. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're pretty much in a very similar place as we were last year. As the school year continues, we continue to spend the budget appropriately and according to the needs of the students and the staff in the district.
So I want to just say an incredibly huge thank you to you, not only as a parent, but as a taxpayer, that this is an incredibly responsible and huge feat. And so thank you to all of you for pulling this off. I didn't expect that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshon. Additional questions from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
So I, I, I have, I think, three, three kind of specific line item, comments or questions tonight. But I can wait a couple of minutes on those. I, I just wanted to first ask if Ms. Whittamore or Dr. Evans could just take a moment for, for our benefit and for those who are listening tonight to just talk about what operational assumptions underline what this report reflects. So to Ms. Marshon's point, we have a lot of encumbered funds. We're certainly operating the district today very differently than we had anticipated when we were developing our budget back in December or January. And it's difficult to know two or three or four months from now, what other operational changes there may be. So if, if either Ms. Whittamore or Dr. Evans could just take a moment to describe what assumptions either are or are not kind of underlying this budget update, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I don't know, Ms. Whittamore, Dr. Evans, which one of you want to dive, dive in? Whoever unmutes first can go ahead.
I'll just jump in and then Ellen can correct me because budget is something we talk about every day and have for, you know, since March, since the town meeting, since we knew what our budget allocation would be. Some of the operating assumptions have to do with return to school and what our initial costs were related to preparing the facility and provisioning for COVID-related costs. Some of those costs fell on us and some fell onto other town departments, particularly the Department of Public Works. You saw in town meeting, for example, that an additional allocation was requested and granted for custodial services. There are also other sources of funding that underpin this budget that have helped the town and the schools to be able to procure or receive reimbursement or anticipate that we'll receive reimbursement for some of the COVID-related expenses. There's some FEMA funding. There are two different COVID-related grants, one small, one larger for the school department. There's a large one for the town for, for about $2 million, of which the school department will receive about a million and a half of that, slightly, or slightly less than that. So underpinning kind of our operating budget expense side and some personnel expenses, we are heavily relying on the additional sources of funding beyond our regular budget in order to make our regular budget be as balanced as possible. The other thing I think that we, that I want to give Ellen a lot of credit for was in the resolution of the last fiscal year, we were able to repurchase some of the materials we needed to open school. And that really helped us to offset some of the anticipated expenses and also to make sure that our revolving accounts were sufficiently strong to withstand some losses in those areas as well. So the budget is a complicated picture that includes revenue, not only from the town, our normal federal grants, our competitive grants that we apply for and receive that, that are very specific for very specific purposes, but also now the COVID-related grants and our revolving accounts for things like preschool tuition, transportation, food service, athletics, et cetera. So all of the pieces have to fit together in order to ensure that the district works smoothly. So what I would say the other, there were some other assumptions around personnel. When we were told by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we essentially needed to run two school districts with the same number of people, that is, a full remote program and a hybrid program, it was probably the most challenging personnel and scheduling exercise I've ever been a part of. And only by virtue of working 20 hours a day for weeks and weeks, especially Jenelle and Emma and Lori and Pam and principals, all of whom worked weeks beyond their contracted time to make it, to pull it together. It was a miracle that we're able to do it. And we're holding it together well, we're meeting student needs, but there's no fat on the turkey. There's absolutely, I've only got lean meat here. So there's no extra funding available for us to expand further, even if we wanted to in terms of hiring additional staff. However, I think we have added additional funding for unanticipated leave of absence substitutes and also for contracted services or professional services. We are closely tracking out of district expenses. And we have some issues to resolve around, you know, issues like busing and food service that Ellen is watching very closely and has budget plans for. I think tonight I'd like to focus on the appropriated budget and then have a follow-up in a month or two about revolving accounts and, and, you know, where we stand with those. And then we'll have a better idea about how all the grants played out, to be sure that all of the things that we said we'd be able to fund through the grants are in fact able to be funded through the grants. And so, so the, the assumption is that we're going to continue to run a hybrid and then in a fully remote program with existing staff that will be able to meet the needs of students with special learning needs, that we are provisioned appropriately for the remainder of the year with PPE and air purifiers and flexi and everything that we need through the CARES grant. And that we'll be able to weather the rest of this fiscal year without asking for additional allocation from the finance committee or from town, spring town meeting. So I feel fairly confident unless there's something unusual that happens, that we'll be able to move forward. Some would ask if we, if we need to go to a full remote model because of spread of illness in the, in the district, in the town, what impact that might have on our budget? And in fact, it's easier to staff and cheaper to staff a fully remote program than it is the two different programs that we're currently running. So the, should the federal government or the state government extend some of the leaves or allow beyond December 31st additional types of leaves that have to be paid? That could have an impact on the personnel budget. At this point, I don't know of any provisions, such provisions, but that's something we're always looking at closely. And I know Lori is in communication with other districts around similar issues. And we're always looking for legal updates from our council on that. But, you know, it's a long-winded answer to Chris's question. Have we considered all the factors that might have an impact on the FY21 budget? Have we adequately provided for those? And do we fully expect to finish the year with, without having it have additional allocations beyond those that, which I've already identified? I'm fairly confident that will be okay. Ellen, what have I forgotten?
Nothing.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I'm sorry, Ms. Bergstrom?
Sorry, Brian. I was just going to say, I wanted to ask a follow-up question before, if Chris is going to move on to a different topic?
That would be perfect. In fact, why don't we go around everyone for any questions and return to Chris? I know he's had some cell issues, so actually I'm going to move on and then come back to him at the end. So that's perfect.
Okay, great. So I, I'm not asking this question, Dr. Evans, to, to put you on the spot about anything. But what would a schedule change do to the tenuous nature of this budget? So following up on Mr. Nixon's question about, you know, the assumptions that we're making, have we assumed, I heard you say, say, full remote? What would a full return do to our budget? And have you even thought about that yet? And knowing that it sounds like just to get the hybrid program up and running this fall, we're relied on several million dollars in COVID grants, as well as, you know, some other sources of funding that were available to us at the time that may not be available to us when we choose to make that move?
So the, I think it's a, it's a reasonable question. A return to full in-person, say there's a miracle and there's a vaccine and within a few months, we'll be able to return fully in-person. We've already budgeted for that when we had this budget approved last spring at town meeting. So if we're able to, if, if everyone is able to come back and safely, health-wise, is able to come back and we don't have any full remote students, that's not an additional budget impact. The options we're considering now for coming back more fully in-person, that's the most complicated and expensive proposition to consider. So say we wanted to bring back kindergarten students for a third or fourth full day. There would be staffing costs for that, that we don't have built into this budget, additional staffing costs. Say we wanted to do that for more than one grade level, then you've got, you know, very substantial into the million staffing costs, depending on how long you're doing it for, whether it's a few months or six months, makes a difference. If we change our staffing model and try to use the same personnel and still support a similar number of full remote students, I think the budget won't have a significant impact. We're just reshuffling the players in the days where they're in school. And the only way to increase the number of hours for everybody while still maintaining a full remote model at the same time is to add additional staff. Because right now, we can't have everybody back in person in the same classroom. And so it's a, it's a complicated algorithm. But it's one we're planning towards. But there are no additional sources of funding for personnel beyond personnel savings in the positive variance that we've seen in the budget already. So there might be some room if we were able to hire a few people, to bring a few people in to assist with additional in-person learning time. And we have some very limited space available, the classrooms formerly used by the full remote students. One of the things I'm going to talk about in my superintendent's report tonight is when parents will be able to make the shift from hybrid to full remote, the next sort of big wave of, of choices that people will make, whether those will be required to be permanent choices and what the impact might be if suddenly we had a lot of students try to come back who were full remote and not have their, not have teachers available because the teachers need to be full remote for health reasons. So the mismatch between the personnel needs, running two options at the same time with the same people, makes scheduling very complicated. The only way to really reshuffle is to completely reduce schedules. And we are looking at possibly doing that for the second semester, particularly at grade six through 12. So lots of moving parts. but I think that there's a, there's an understanding that there simply is not a source of funding on the town side or in the school budget to um dramatically increase our, our operating budget to, to make that happen. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Like I mentioned, I know that Mr. Nixon's having some trouble um speaking at the moment. He's still listening, but so I'd like to move on to anybody else who has questions from the committee and then we'll return because I know Mr. Nixon had some sort of specific questions. Seeing none, uh, well.
I was, I was, I had a question. It left my brain, but um, so Dr. Evans, so um, so you're saying that to move into the full in person while maintaining the full remote is just, we can't do it, not only because of budget constraints, but also because of space constraints. That would just be, even if we were to open a parkhurst or every possible classroom in this district, it's still not possible. On top of that, scheduling everybody and matching the personnel to the schools, even to impact kindergarten through, let's say, second or first grade, it's still, it's like a domino effect. Did I get that right?
Right. So there, so there's a space issue, but there's also, and Parkhurst, Parkhurst is not available yet because the elevator isn't completed. Completed probably till what, December, Ellen? Yeah. Um, so uh, it's, it's primarily a personnel issue and it's, and it's a funding issue, but also available personnel. When asked at, you know, real meeting, there just aren't qualified certified teachers out there looking for jobs, especially at the elementary level, um, where we are most anxious to bring students back for more time. So some districts are doing a variety of things, um, using other personnel to bring students back and kind of supervising them while they work on remote, um, remote type assignments like our choice boards, but having them do it in person. Uh, it's just, it's very difficult to spread teachers so thin that way. One of the biggest advantages and the thing that I'm seeing students make tremendous progress with is our very small class sizes is kind of a side effect of the, of the cohorting. Um, not only has it kept our school spread very low, um, when we've had positive cases, the cohorting has an unintended kind of consequence when you have eight or ten students in a classroom that the teachers can give them a lot of individual attention. And so for the two full days that they're there. And it's all academics on those days. They're, they don't leave to go to any specials. They're really there just focusing on academics the entire school day for the full school day. And so, um, so it's really been very gratifying to see, uh, to see that's, that side effect. I guess what I would say is if it's safe to have everybody back full and in person, there shouldn't be a need for remote. Because if it's safe to have twenty-four students in a classroom with a teacher, then um it's safe for everybody to be back. And if it's not safe and we can't bring everybody back at the same time, then we should just acknowledge that that's what it is and plan for that for the remainder of the year with the understanding that there may be some areas where we can bring students back for additional time, say on Wednesdays or perhaps our youngest students back for a little more time if we're able to eke out some additional personnel to support them. So it's, it's not only a space issue, um, it also is a, it's a available personnel issue and a resource issue. So it's kind of a trick.
So my big concern is that, uh, people hear Governor Baker and Desi representatives talking about more in person, more in person time, you know, school transmission isn't happening, but they don't follow up with a, so we're gonna give you all this extra funding. It's just like, pull it out of a hat and you've pulled enough out of the hat that, you know, there's just no more in that poor hat. And so for them to throw out all of this, you know, nonsense about having us come off, bring in kids more, more, to more in person. Are they following up with any sensible plans around that or are they just leaving it up to us?
So there are some districts, a handful of districts with a lot of open classrooms because they don't have enrollment issues. Or they have significant additional funding. The governor visited Carlisle, for instance, which is a small, I don't know, fewer than a thousand students, elementary district, um, four thousand dollars more for every student, per people they're spending. Um, and so they're able to bring more students back in person. But when you really dig into the details, when I ask the districts that have brought more people back, often it's only for partial days. They look like more, but it's not typically more hours in total. Um, and some of them just have more space and more teachers available. Um, I saw that, uh, Dan Vers was looking to bring some students back more in person. They were using art teachers and reading teachers to just kind of supervise the students on the extra time that they're back, not with their own teachers. There's nobody that I know of who's bringing back full classrooms within a classroom. So not, nobody has twenty-four students in a regular public school classroom. The problem is that at that distance, we can't maintain the CDC guidelines for close contacts and we would be quarantining whole classrooms all the time as one student becomes positive. We can't have them eat lunch in school because we can't have them succeed apart without a mask. So you then cut out several hours each instructional day because you'd have to send them home. And so, um, what looks like on the surface to be, you know, reasonable is not reasonable in a district like Winchester. We don't have the space, the funding or the staffing to do it. And um, I know that people think we're just not thinking outside the box. Um, and I get emails frequently from parents saying, we have a lot of smart people in Winchester. We could help you figure this out. But what they don't understand is how municipal finance works and what the pool is out there of available staff. And even if we were to get a miraculous allocation of several million dollars to hire, it would be hard for us to get the right people in place. And so if, I don't want anything more than to have more students in school. I don't want anybody sitting at home who doesn't want to be. Um, and we're really trying to rack our brains to see what we can do on Wednesdays. Uh, but I have to say, the Wednesday separation between the two cohorts has saved us many times. Where we've had students who have not been in school while infect us, um, and has kept it so that, you know, at the present, we just have very few students quarantined, very few students positive in the district, in a district our size, um, that we know of. Uh, and tomorrow that could change. Um, but right now, the one person, um, I would really like to commend who's been, two people really, who've been incredibly helpful and it may not come up tonight, so I'm gonna shove it in here, even though we're talking really um about budget, is our public health department and our nurse leader. Um, and I speak to both of them almost every night because as positive cases crop up, we're discussing them. There's a lot of work that goes into contact tracing. There are a lot of back and forth. They, they both review every communication I send about every positive case. And so there's been tremendous cooperation. We're worried about teachers, um, and support staff members and principals burning out. I'm worried about our public health department um, because I don't think they've had a day or an evening off for months either. Uh, and so, so we really want to do what's right for our students. So this budget, we think we'll be able to get to the end of the year and, and provide appropriate services. Um, and that's, that's a real tribute to planning and management of the budget. And so, you know, we'd be happy to take more specific questions, but I'm glad you asked the question about overall in the budget. What was the barrier? And, and Brian has said the same thing. It's really threefold. So, so we appreciate everyone's understanding. I wish we could change it, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I believe that we have Mr. Nixon able to speak again. Um, issues with Zoom, one of the side effects of not always being able to meet in person. Mr. Nixon, if you're um ready to resume, um, we are here.
I appreciate it. You hear me okay?
Yes, we do. Now.
Thanks. Yeah, apologize. I had a Bluetooth issue with my mic. Um, so I appreciate that. I was able to hear the whole discussion, so that was very helpful. Um, so first of all, I want to thank Ms. Widmore, um, who's always got great answers to my many, many questions. I've got questions at high altitude and then I've got some that are really into the weeds and she always takes a lot of time with me to go through them, so I really appreciate that very much. Couple of things that I, uh, I just wanted to call to the committee's attention tonight and ask, um, uh, Ms. Widmore, maybe Ms. Gerard to just cast a little light on one issue so that we have some understanding. Um, is, um, well, I'll tell you what, let me, let me start with the simpler one actually, which is not a Pam Gerard issue. Um, so in, in a couple of instances, we have some line items that are no longer here from prior reports, like from prior years. And in one instance, for instance, we've eliminated the five-two-one, uh, sorry, five-two-one-eight-three line, that software administrator, um, you'll find we have a large line under software in this report. And um, my understanding from talking to Ms. Widmore is that, um, that it, it, it's somewhat cumbersome perhaps to manage the resources split between those two lines. So we'd sort of collapsed them. So, um, I think that number was pretty high. It was around two hundred and forty-one or something thousand dollars under software. But that's really not just for software as I understand it, that's for people. So, you know, typically we separate the stuff from the people. Um, and in this instance, I think we're, we're combining it, but I think that's happening for a reason.
No.
Um, and I wanted perhaps Ms. Widmore to just take a moment and explain why we're making that change. It's not really a question so much about the funding level.
Ms. Widmore, thank you.
Okay. So first of all, it, it has nothing to do with, uh, with personnel. So last year, um, how Desi had us break, school business officials uh, report, um, technology and software was changed. So I had thought that, um, that software needed to be broken out between software that was used in the classrooms and software adminis, software that we use. Um, in, across the district in administrative capacities. For instance, um, school spring, um, you know, Aspen, things like that. Um, I didn't need to do that and, uh, for reporting purposes with the state and to split the two accounts, um, wasn't, was in fact cumbersome, which is why we went back to doing it the way we had been doing it forever before I tried to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore. That's helpful. Mr. Nixon?
Yeah. So, so in other words, like it, it's, um, it's sort of like administrative software maybe rather than software administration. That's probably where I got confused.
Yes.
And I, I appreciate the explanation. Okay, that's great. Um, then the, the next one, uh, which maybe does involve Ms. Gerard, um, and I've spoken to Ellen just briefly about this. It comes on page eighteen. So this is in our, um, special education budget. And it's our line item five-three-one-one-eight, which is professional services. So I want to just call the committee's attention, um, our, what's listed is the original appropriation and I can't remember Ms. Widmore if we actually adjusted this in May, but certainly it, we, we pushed it up after the original budget that, that we created for town meeting. Um, last year's appropriation.
Mr. Nixon, could you state that budget line again? Mr. Nixon, just for everyone, could you state the budget? That's okay.
Yep. I'm sorry. So this is, this is on our packet, page eighteen, and it's five-three-one-one-eight.
Thank you.
Professional services. Do you see that?
Yes, thank you very much. It just was fast. Thank you.
Sure. No worries. So, um, what I just wanted to, to sort of call some attention to, um, is that, um, last year's funding was just above, um, four hundred thousand dollars. And, um, so this represents at seven hundred thousand, obviously a very significant, almost seventy-five percent increase. And there are a lot of reasons why we did that. There are tremendous unknowns associated with, um, this line item, the kind of services that might be required. And we've heard both Ms. Gerard and Dr. Evans talk about, you know, trying to project sort of how many kids are gonna be in district, out of district, sort of home support, to be very difficult. So we increased that sharply, uh, rightly, I think. But what's interesting is if we go over and we look to the right under year-to-date actuals, um, we've spent a little less than fifty-seven thousand dollars, but actually last year at this time, we've spent more. So we see a large encumbrance and it's about three hundred and seven thousand dollars. But what I just wanted to call out was that available balance of three thirty-six is about a quarter of a million dollars more than what we saw last year, which was around eighty-two thousand dollars. So, um, my understanding, having spoken to Ms. Widmore, is that although that three thirty-six shows up under a column called available, and I'm doing that in air quotes, there is some expectation that we will need to spend that, um, on this line item. And so I, I just wanted the committee to see that, that we made a substantial change in the spring by bumping that up substantially, um, again by almost, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. Um, although our year-to-date spend is actually lower than what it was last year, it leaves us what looks like a big number. But my understanding is we still think we will spend it, but because it's not fully encumbered, I wondered if maybe Ms. Gerard could just speak to how she envisions that money being spent or just sort of assure us that that money belongs in that line item as opposed to being moved elsewhere. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I see Ms. Widmore has her hand raised, I think in response to your question, so.
Um, if I could just, uh, before Ms. Gerard speaks, um, if the budget line, um, of, um, for professional services have been increased, um, based upon the, um, the trends in spending, um, in FY nineteen, we had spent, um, six, six hundred and ninety-one thousand and FY twenty, we had spent six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, and in regards to, um, what has been spent out and paid year-to-date, um, I had mentioned to, um, Mr. Nixon when we spoke earlier that, um, and Ms. Gerard can, um, speak to this as well. We're noticing, um, with vendors working remotely that we are seeing a delay in receiving some bills, um, specifically in, um, special education. We're, um, we're getting lumps of bill net bills now, um, for services, um, and placements from the summer months on that we're just now getting, um, those processed. So that, um, I, I do believe that, um, just how business is being handled right now and how things are being done. Um, I also want to point out the fact that, um, as diligent as we have been in my office to make sure that every special ed bill has, that we see has been paid, um, as promptly as possible, that my office has had, um, some staffing, um, shortfalls recently, um, and we've been trying to make sure that special ed has been addressed as quickly as possible.
Um, thank you, Ms. Widmore. Before Ms. Gerard responds if she needs to, are, would any bill that you are anticipating be listed as encumbered?
Yes.
So, um, the available balance is not those that you're waiting for bills for because you already are waiting for them. So you just may not have paid them, but you, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Gerard, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, um?
Not much, um, Brian and Chris, to be honest, other than I do anticipate that those, that line will, um, be going down, um, through the course of this year rather drastically.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. Mr. Nixon, I, I didn't know, you had, I think you said you had three questions slash comments. Is that, um, does that address your, or at least, um, respond to each of your questions and comments?
Uh, those were the two big ones. Um, there was just a, there, there was a minor issue with respect to, um, McCall. We had, we had a line item for, um, teaching assistance. And, um, in speaking with Ms. Widmore, I understand that that, and that was not a line item we saw last year. Um, and what's great about the conversations is it sort of reminds me, we, we tweak how we do business in this district and we have those conversations and we sort of forget about them until we see Munus report. So my understanding at McCall, and it's, it's a very modest amount of money, that, that's really a reflection of the building aid that now exists. And I think prior to last year, we did not actually assign building aid. So, um, I, I, as I understood it, that, that line item that says teaching assistance at McCall, that's not meant to capture all the teaching assistance because it's frankly just not a lot of money. That's really kind of a specific building aid, uh, support role, uh, that we just implemented this year. So that was helpful to clarify. It just means we account for, um, what we call ESPs today, uh, elsewhere in the report. Is that fair, Ms. Widmore?
It is, and I am going to work, um, with the controller to try and, um, have all of the lines that reference teaching assistance changed to ESPs.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Are there additional questions or comments from the committee? Um, i- if the committee is so inclined, I would accept a motion to suspend our rules. And, uh, so the first motion would be to suspend our rules and allow us to vote on approving the transfers as recommended.
Mr. Chair, I move that we suspend our rules in order to be able to vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Marshat. Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? I would request a roll call vote on that. Ms. Bollinger is?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous, which brings us to the motion at hand, which would be to approve the line item transfers as detailed in the, uh, uh, the document provided by Ms. Widmore and I would. in the uh, uh, the document provided by Ms. Whittamore, and I would accept a motion. I believe we have um, uh, proposed wording in the uh, uh, book as well.
I move to I move to approve a budget transfer that adjusts budget lines to reflect the revised budget column in the November thirteen, twenty twenty financial report.
I second that.
I second that. Thank you. I believe Ms. Bollinger is beat you, Mr. Nixon, um, on the second. Um, any discussion on that motion? So I will request a roll call vote and I will go in reverse order. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger is?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Um, Ms. Whittamore, thank you for um, for getting us to this point in this year with all these numbers. You know I love numbers. I know you love numbers. Um, I, I'm, I enjoy this report every year and uh, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is projected enrollment for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Provide the committee with information on our projected enrollment. You have information in your packet. And Dr. Evans, um, I will turn this over to you. And you are muted.
I unmute myself. It seems nothing is easy in the era of a global pandemic and enrollment projections are no exception. Uh, every year at about this time, uh, I presented the committee my projections for um, K twelve enrollment for the subsequent year. And the main objective in doing that is to provision for adequate teachers and materials for the number of students we expect to walk through the doors in, in our seven schools in the fall. And so uh, we've had a methodology that the district has used for quite some time where we uh, base our enrollment projections on really two things. One is uh, historical averages, either one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year, depending on your perspective in the year. Um, you have those numbers uh, in front of you based on the current enrollment in the district for the uh, school year we're currently in. Uh, and uh, but this year, uh, the projection for particularly um, the lower grade levels for next fall is incredibly difficult. Every year we go through a lot of gyrations to sort of figure out what the kindergarten enrollment would be. Uh, and it varies pretty significantly and doesn't have a strong correlation with the um, students who were born five years ago in Winchester. Because increasingly, families are moving to Winchester to enroll in our schools. Um, and so we always have more kindergartners than uh, were born to families living in Winchester five years uh, before the fall enrollment starts. Um, but this year, uh, we had many, many fewer kindergartners enroll than a typical year. And that was the true, and also first grade. And that was true across the Commonwealth. That overall, on average, districts lost about five percent of their students, their, their expected students. Um, and of some of those students went to private schools because some of the private schools are fully in-person. Uh, some of the students were homeschooled and Jen Ellen Emma manages that process for our district. And so uh, we've reported out on that. Um, but a large number of the kindergartners either are staying in a preschool setting or are staying at home and not enrolled. And so we need to provision in next year's enrollment projection for those students who didn't come to us in K. Um, which means a bump up in grade one enrollment. It could mean a bump up in grade K enrollment. If some of the students are of age to go to grade one and have finished a year of kindergarten somewhere else, some may choose to do kindergarten. And so when we're looking at the total number of elementary sections, which in most years has been about one-ten, hundred and ten elementary sections in our five elementary schools, K to five, um, we need to provision for a bounce back of the students who weren't with us this year, who we know live in town and are likely to come back. So I estimated about eighty or eighty-five of those students who didn't come to us will come back either in K or one. And I split them evenly between the two, figuring some will have finished K somewhere else and will want to go to first grade. It will be of that age and will enter first grade. Some will do kindergarten. In addition, we'll get our usual number of kindergarten students. We also need to um, take into consideration the, the students who have gone to private schools for this year only and will likely come back. So I've assumed that some of the homeschooled students and some of the private school students will come back to us if we're able to fully open in-person in the fall. This budget is built on the assumption that we'll be open as usual in the fall. So the, the difficulty and, and uh, Brian, Vanelia and I have discussed this, is trying to hit the number correctly because this um, this overall enrollment is based on two things, the three-year average and a small bounce back number. The problem is the three-year average is artificially depressed because we've pulled out, the three-year average is lower than it would otherwise be because we pulled out students this year for homeschool and private school choices and also the kindergartners and first graders who didn't come to us. And so what I don't want to do is overestimate and have a budget request that's higher than we'll end up needing, nor do I want to underestimate. And so the purpose in presenting this tonight is just to get your feedback. And what I'd like to draw your attention to is primarily the K five numbers and the um, in the report that, that shows uh, the um, total number of sections at each school and grade level. And what you can see is that um, you will, you have a hundred and thirteen projected sections. And that's slightly higher than what we normally have. That'll be factored into my first run budget if you think that number looks correct. But there's another factor that we have to take into consideration and that is available classroom space. And so should the additional classrooms um, work out to be at schools where we have run out of space and we've run out of space completely, we'll need to make a determination about where those students will go. And so in, in conferring with each of the five principals, they think these numbers look fairly solid um, and accurate. Um, and uh, but it will mean that we don't have enough classrooms likely at possibly Lincoln and Lynch schools.
Dr. Evans, if I, I don't want to interrupt you, but we don't have that page in our packet. We do have it in our, um, it is in the Google Drive and I'd be happy to share it so that everyone could see it.
Yeah, can you share? Because I, for some reason, I just opened my packet and I don't have it either. And so I don't know if it, if it slipped out of.
I'm going to work on sharing it. What, you can continue talking and I'll work on sharing it and you'll see it when you see it.
So it's in the, it's in the um, enrollment spreadsheet. Um, and uh, and maybe, maybe we didn't print the second tab. And that's why you're not seeing it. But, but here it is. Uh, so if you scroll down.
Can you, can you see it?
You can, yes.
Okay.
You scroll down to the bottom, you can see that this projection is for a hundred and thirteen sections. Whereas in the uh, November two thousand and nineteen, I was projecting a hundred and ten or a hundred and eleven sections. Uh, this is for bounce back numbers. And the second complicating factor when you're trying to determine um, how many sections you need is where those students will be, which schools. Um, and it makes a big difference, particularly if you're out of classrooms. And so one thing we need to take into account is if we need twenty-eight classrooms uh, at Lynch School, we don't have twenty-eight classrooms at Lynch School. We've long talked about the potential use of Parkhurst as swing space before uh, and until Lynch School gets rebuilt. Um, and one option that I have discussed and that probably merits a deeper discussion um, would be to move the preschool classrooms to Parkhurst and free up classrooms for other grade levels. And should our pre-enrollment for the fall, particularly with kindergarten in grade one, bump the Lynch numbers up too high, um, we may have to do that. And so we will build our budget plan with that in mind. My hope is that we can wait a full year and it'll be a year from September. But it may very well, if our enrollment is robust and some of the building projects um, come to fruition and finish, you know, earlier than later during the um, next uh, school year, uh, we will run out of space at some schools. The two schools I'm, I'm most concerned about would be Lincoln and Lynch. In Lincoln, you can see that the overall class sizes are fairly low in this projection. Um, but it really depends on where the students end up enrolling, whether it bumps to an additional need for a section, uh, whether it's seventy-two students and you need four sections at eighteen, um, or sixty-five students and you need three sections at slightly under twenty-two. Uh, you can see that um, the same number of overall students, depending on how they're distributed at an individual school, could result in more, more teachers or fewer teachers, depending on the number of sections. So I'll stop there and answer any questions or take any feedback. Uh, this is again, a preliminary um, enrollment projection based on some bounce back. Uh, there is concern that I may not have captured enough bounce back, um, and that the overall projections uh, don't follow our typical three-year historical averages because they're depressed by this year's numbers a bit. So Brian, is there anything that you want to add before you take questions? You know, you and I have discussed this projection. Anything I haven't captured in my kind of summary?
So um, no, I think you captured most everything. We spent a long time looking at um, I would say uh, the other projection, which is the, the, what is in our um, packet. And uh, going through the numbers and I agree that when we look at the numbers from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one, we see a big drop. That's not a surprise. We've talked, told everybody about this. But back then goes into our three-year averages. I um, my, my gut feeling, looking at the numbers, in fact, going back a couple of years at the middle school and high school, is I feel like our numbers at the middle school and high school might be um, artificially low for our projection. And that was what I, I mentioned to you. Um, but I think what you're most um, concerned about right now are the K to five numbers. And based on the, the, us looking at them quite in-depth and uh, sort of tracing them back, I think they look more reasonable. I, I feel, I have more confidence in them than I do in the six to twelve numbers. Um, which is fortunate because six to twelve, you have a little bit more flexibility in budgeting than you do for K to five. So um, that's all I would add is uh, we spent a long time sort of going through the numbers, going through the formulas, making sure all the numbers match what Desi has in their numbers so that everything in this whole chart matches everything um, that Desi has for all of our COVID one data for every year and going past. So I want to add that.
So I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback as we go through. Uh, just before you ask your questions, the, the impact of additional students on uh, six through eight is different from nine through twelve. Some of it has to do with how many students are on a team uh, and how many team teachers we have. At nine through twelve, it's uh, easier to absorb an additional fifty students if they're evenly spread across the grade levels. Where it gets more complicated is if they are pushing numbers above thirty in core classes, uh, then you need to add another section. And so we typically have a little, built into our budget, a little bit of wiggle room for enrollment-related increases at the high school. Um, and often this is um, students wanting to take additional coursework. A lot of students double and triple up on um, science and math, for example. Um, and that pushes some of the, that has in the past for some of the math classes to thirty. Um, and we've had to add additional um, math sections because of that. So that's a happy problem to have. Not so happy on the budget front, but happy on the academic front. So um, I think we have enough, we have capacity. Uh, Dennis Mahoney, when he saw this, said, yeah, you're probably about fifty students shy from where I think we really will be um, in the fall uh, based on historical move-ins. We, we've typically had and had this year a lot of move-ins at all grade levels to kind of offset some of the losses, but especially middle and high school have been very robust for move-ins in the last few years. Um, which is unexpected for a district like Winchester, so.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I concur with Mr. Mahoney, by the way. Um, Ms. Marshat?
Thank you. I just, I want to make sure I'm reading the, this chart correctly. So um, above the, the little chart with the one-year rate, those are actuals, correct? And then below, I'm sorry. And then below that are projected, so twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, that's what we would project under that formula. And then the C nineteen RET, our students, we believe, will return.
Right, those are students who would not typically have left us, but have left this year for private schools, homeschooling, or not enrolled at, for kindergarten. Um, and I think those will be what I'm calling bounce back COVID nineteen students.
And then, so my concern is that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we were at four thousand six hundred and ten. And the projected twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is only four thousand five hundred and sixty-six. That to me seems like might, we might face exactly the situation you're talking about.
So I, I think what is really difficult to know is will there be a vaccine? Will be, will we be fully open? Will some families continue to homeschool or have um, or use private schools? Uh, there are sort of a lot of unknowns. If we don't ask for enough staff, we risk uh, running into issues as we develop our budget and get ready for a sprint town meeting. If we um, ask for too many um, staff members, it means that other town departments have to make sacrifices because all the money comes from the same pocket. And, and so the other complicating factor is state aid is based on your October, typically based on your October enrollment for the subsequent year. And because all districts in the Commonwealth have had their enrollment depressed to some extent, some more than others, there's a real fear that when these bounce back students come, there'll be at least, there'll be a year, full year delay till the next fiscal year when they'll be counted and um, that you'll receive state aid for them. And so oh, projecting, Ellen will have some difficulty projecting state aid for next year as well. Um, although generally we've been held harmless. Um, there was a lot of uh, additional funding that was supposed to come through the Student Opportunity Act that was deferred. Um, but with the pandemic, everything seems to be um, uh, much more uncertain and more difficult to predict. So um, so in general, I think when you have an impact on K one, it carries through for the next twelve years. And so if students are lost to the district who go to private school and who don't return, that has an impact on our funding levels, but also has an impact in subsequent years. What we've been seeing, however, is that we're getting more students enrolling and coming into the district than are leaving the district. Um, you can see that based on the typical averages, particularly over, like say, the five-year averages, all of those where it's above a hundred percent. That means the, it's two, a hundred and two percent, a hundred and three percent. Those are all move-ins and those are significant numbers of students. Um, because we, we always have students who either go to vocational school or go to private school between middle and high school. Um, and in affluent districts, that percent could be as many, as much as ten percent. Um, it's been, it varies depending on the economy and um, but our results uh, in terms of achievement levels have been extraordinarily high. So that's attracted new families to Winchester and also um, helped us retain families. But this year is a strange year. Some people need childcare and want their children in school full-time and are choosing to go to appropriate schools or homeschool instead.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um, I see that Ms. Bergstrom has her hand raised.
I figured it would be easier, Mr. Vinalio, since we aren't all on the screen together.
Thank you. It's very helpful, actually.
Um, Dr. Evans and Mr. Vinalio, it sounds like you've um, run some of these numbers quite a bit. Did you by chance take the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen numbers and run those to do a comparative three-year average and remove the twenty twenty-one school year altogether, since we feel that it might be an anomaly?
So I, I, I did not. And one of the reasons I didn't is I wanted to get your feedback to see um, what other additional kinds of numbers you, you know, I could be looking at. Um, the um, the K five enrollment has varied and was increasing uh, pretty steadily for a few years before it took a little bit of a dip as we've had one large class kind of work its way through. Um, whereas the high school enrollment has increased significantly. So it, I, it might, we might get a different result if we just focus on K five to do that than, you know, high school. So if you think that would be helpful, we can run that. But I want to be, you know, pretty transparent that the numbers that I've got in, particularly for K and one, could have a major swing. But I want to be, you know, pretty transparent that the numbers that I've got in, particularly for K and one, could have a major swing. It could, we could only welcome back thirty students where I've predicted forty-one, or we could get sixty students. And that makes a big difference depending on which school they're in, um, in terms of whether it bumps up the need for an additional section. So really what I need is not so much of an accurate prediction for each school. At this point, in each grade level at this point, but more of a sense for that you support the overall number of sections that I'm asking for. As the year progresses, we'll try to look at um. Asking those families who've left, whether if things are back to more normal times, whether they'd be returning. Um, and we'll try to get at the census information for kindergarten and also. Closely track the building projects and see if any of them will come online during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Our ultimate goal is to have enough space to accommodate all our students. In effective spaces until the lynch school opens. Um, but that's not going to be for at least three full school years.
Right. And I guess I, I had a similar parallel question. Did we look at the number of sections that we have? Since we again think K-one could be an anomaly, two-five this year? And how does that compare to, like, if we take out K-one? How does the one thirteen compare to how many sections we're running this year?
So um, I, I haven't done a direct comparison. Can you scroll down, Brian? I have the, I have the current numbers of sections. The hard part about. This year, when you say this year, we're running twenty-three full remote sections.
Right.
And so I don't know how much we would have actually ended up with at each school. Had we not had to pull out the district-wide full remote. But in general, I think last year, I predict. Um.
I can't scroll any further down. I don't think there's something below.
That's right. So I just wanted to see grade five. Michelle was kind of asking. So I, this is the same, we typically have done. Um, eighteen or nineteen at those levels. So I think probably three, four and five are pretty similar. Where we've got a big bump up is potentially grade two. And part of that is because you've got a couple of five-section schools there, based on the current number of grade-one students in the district. Um, and if you scroll up a little bit, Brian, sorry to make you my scribe here. I've got twenty kindergarten and seventeen grade one. We could end up with eighteen kindergarten and twenty-one grade one. Depends on where the kids come back. I really just split them evenly. Um, and as, you know, my fear is that I don't have enough. And so I've got a hundred and thirteen, you know, I might come back in a month and say I, I'd be more comfortable with a hundred and fifteen. But kindergarten also comes with the additional cost of an E, of a full-time uh, assistant, classroom assistant ESP. Um, so that, so that's got to be budgeted as well.
Are we running close to one thirteen total sections this year, even with full remote?
No, we're running a hundred and nine or a hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten would be close.
One, one hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight, thank you.
We budgeted one, we budgeted one-ten in the FY twenty-one budget.
But for context, remember that we are ninety-nine kindergarten students below our projection. So that in itself is, what, five classrooms? Ninety-nine students. I mean, obviously, they might have mixed in and you wouldn't need five individual classrooms, but ninety-nine kindergarten students.
Yeah, the, the hard thing about this year is that at some schools, we're running two small kindergartens. Um, whereas typically, because of the number of students at that school who are remote. So some of the remote classes are quite large, some are small. It's not even across the district. Uh, and the students left behind are separated into either two or three sections for the hybrid students. And so. I, I think we would have ended up at probably a hundred and eight or a hundred and nine ultimately. Um, so a hundred and thirteen is significant, significantly more in terms of financial impact. Um, on the overall budget. But I just want, I, I just want to estimate the right number in our initial budget. Um, development uh, and, and make sure, this is sort of the reasonableness test. I'm presenting this to you, sort of, does this seem reasonable?
And I guess my last data uh, seeking question is. What, at what point of the year do we find that it would be appropriate to reach out to the families? We don't normally have the ability to reach out to people that haven't come and say, are you planning to come next year? Because the kindergartners are so hard to predict. But this year, knowing who didn't come, because we have that. You know, we, we know who has unenrolled. It, at what point do we gather that data to play into this? And help us to make as accurate a prediction as you can?
So my plan is to develop the budget in December and present it in, in January as we typically do. Um, and sometime before you make your final vote. Um, to survey parents and sort of do another um, data check. To see if we can get closer to actual numbers. By the time we submit this to the town manager and it goes through the process of town meeting. Um, you will have several different budget um, votes as we look at need. Um, add additional positions, uh, try to innovate where we can and continue to add the positions that we had. As multi-year adds as part of the override. So there are a lot of moving parts to this budget, but um, it all is driven first by moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. I saw Ms. Bollinger's had her hand raised. I'll go to you next.
Thank you. I was wondering on the C COVID nineteen return E-line. Are you assuming one hundred percent are returning, or is this like a percentage of that?
It's a, it's a percentage of it because um, we've had some movement. So the numbers that this is based on were, and I don't have a date on this chart. But when I, when I gave you the original chart where we tracked how many students had been enrolled and then withdrew. Um, it's an estimate based on that.
Okay.
So it's slightly fewer probably than um, have actually left. I don't think they'll all come back.
Right.
Really depends on health conditions and the state of the world, but I'm assuming that most people who were enrolled. Um, you know, but it, it, planning to come in the summer, who then unenrolled uh, during the summer. Um, were people who are likely to come back.
Or it could be spread out over, over two years that we see a return of students.
It's true. The, the, the big unknown is kindergarten.
Yeah. Um, and then I guess I was also wondering um, with Ms. Bergstrom. About uh, running, the, running these numbers based on, or excluding twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Well, we can.
I'm just adding, I'm just adding a voice to that.
Oh, sure. I mean, I'm, I'm open to whatever works. Um, we're really striving to get this, these two charts accurate. And um, and as I said, we never change the DESE October enrollment, even if it's slightly off. Um, so we know that those numbers are accurate, but anything below the line is subject to negotiation. So. We can run additional numbers and send them to you.
I would point out in that regard, while I totally agree that using the three-year average. That includes that precipitous drop might give us false numbers. If we look at the three-year average versus the five-year average that has diluted that one-year drop. The five-year average, obviously, is only one-fifth of it. We don't see a significant, a significant change between them. So while I, I, I think that if we were to exclude this past year in looking at our three-year average. We'll see it bump up a little bit. It's not like we're talking about adding a hundred students. We're talking about, i- if we go up to our five or ten-year, you can see it's a percentage point or so difference between the five-year average and the three-year average. So um, just point that out. Uh, Ms. Marshant?
I just want to um, uh, kind of address the fact that the, the sale of homes in Winchester. Is still hot. I mean, my Realtor friends can attest to that. So um, there's that. And then there's also, again, the, the big housing uh, projects that are coming down the pipe. So it, it, to me, I would think we would want to go a little more comfortably broader than this. But that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. Mr. Nixon, I see you have your hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so glad Ms. Marshant just said that because it, it, it's sort of the segue. For something I was going to say. I feel like I'm actually going to be the contrarian tonight. You all know how much I'm, how much I like numbers and I like being into the weed. But I'm actually going to challenge all of us and the administration tonight to focus less on averaging. Three, four or five years of numbers and just pause for a moment and reflect on our ten-year facilities master plan. Um, which is a fantastic document for which we had professional demographers, including the UMass Donahue Institute. And let's just remember that all of the things that they said about Winchester. Four, three and a half, four years ago, remain true today. We're close to Boston. We're convenient to professionals who work in Boston. We have a very high-performing school district. We have very competitive class sizes. And all of the things that have led to enrollment increase over the years. Continue to be the case today, and they will continue to be the case in the future. And at some point, when we get on the backside of coronavirus and things begin to return to normal. Um, I think we, it's very important that we keep that in mind. And so as I was doing some math, I, I um, of course, went back to the master plan while I was listening to all the discussions tonight. If you took the K-five enrollment from the sixteen-seventeen school year when the master plan was created. And you add to that the growth that was projected for next September. And you pull out the large forty-B project on Holton Street, which did not happen. You get an enrollment number and you divide by twenty. You get one hundred and twelve point nine. So I absolutely think the one thirteen is the right number. And I appreciate Dr. Evans's point about gee, maybe, maybe it's not even big enough. And, and the reason why I think it's important we keep that in mind is, just as you can have fluctuations within schools. And within certain grade levels in schools, there will always be fluctuations year over year. There will always be a year where. For whatever reason, we didn't get as many kindergartners as we thought. Maybe many of them got red-shirted. Who knows? But uh, to Ms. Marshant's point, Winchester remains a very attractive community for many different reasons. And I have every expectation that um, if, if there are those maybe empty nesters who decide now's the time to put the how-to house up for sale. That the flight to the suburbs that we're hearing is happening nationally, I know is happening in eastern Massachusetts. And I have, I have no reason to expect that those homes aren't going to get snapped up by. Folks looking to start a family or those already with, with young families. And so I would just say, let's take a step back and, and look back at the Donahue Institute report, which really took a long view. This, this is an interesting time for us to be having this conversation because there was actually a five-year and a ten-year projection. And those numbers were based on many, many different things. It was the usual outmigration, inmigration. It was demolition, rebuild. It was forty-B. Um, it was many different things. Some of those things have come to fruition like we expected. Some things have not. Some things have actually happened faster. But if you take the long view, I say we're, we're very much sort of on pace to keep to. We're on pace to sort of need the kinds of um, uh, elementary sections that the master plan would have suggested. So again, you go, you look at the projection for next school year. You just take out the one mega project that did not happen on Holton Street, divide by twenty. We are very nearly at Dr. Evans's one thirteen. So I feel like we absolutely, absolutely should plan on that at a minimum. And then perhaps carry on the conversation about whether we need another at some point. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I would um, say I agree with you. I, 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 I can't speak for anybody else. But I don't think I heard anybody saying that they thought one thirteen was a priori too high. Um, I think, I think we might be all on the same page with you, just different directions to get to the same answer. But I, again, I don't speak for anybody but myself. Um, I see Ms. Bergstrom has her hand raised again. I don't know if that's just from before or if it's a new question.
No, I was just going to add in from uh, my housing partnership experience that. Um, right now, the town hasn't received any permits on any projects and no construction has begun. So I think, you know, we may get a reprieve next year for the forty-B. Projects in our calculations, but that doesn't discount any move-ins or sales in Winchester that Mr. Nixon is talking about. I think um, I think perhaps the year after that could be a uh, a very um, big impact. On the schools as those projects do start to get permitted and open. But um, we may luckily have another year reprieve on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bergstrom. Um, I, I'm hearing a consensus, there's nothing to vote on this. That, that one thirteen for our elementary sections seems like a sane number to use in your early budget development. Obviously with all the caveats that you just heard tonight. So uh, certainly we're all on the same page as you, as far as that number, it sounds like. So, thank, thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, seeing no additional uh, questions or comments. I'm going, let me get off the, um, hold on. I need to, I'll end the screen share. Sorry, I'm. Stock share, that's better. Um, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is um, an action item. It is to approve um, the uh, draft minutes that we have to review and approve. I would uh, entertain discussion or emotion if there are either one on any of the. Of the August twenty-fifth and September first minutes.
I would move to approve the August twenty-fifth and September first minute as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that moved and seconded motion? Seeing none, a roll call vote required. I will again go in reverse order, just give everybody different order. Mr. Nixon? Aye. Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Uh, the chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Uh, thank you. And uh, I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Bollinger. Who spends hours going through these minutes. Um, Ms. Cannavan spends hours and hours writing them. Ms. Bollinger spends hours and hours um, reviewing them. And so when we get the minutes here, they've been doubly checked. Um, and of course, you all have had a chance to look at them as well. So uh, thank you to both of you. Uh, that brings us to the chair report. I kind of feel like everything that I was going to discuss somehow came up during the meeting tonight. Um, I do want to take a personal note, um, if you will indulge me in wishing a happy anniversary to my wife. Thirty years ago today, we started dating. So um, I would like to be celebrating with her, but I'm here with you. So. So I just wanted to give that shout out. And I would move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you. I have a few things tonight that I'd uh, just like to share with the community. Um, I will put out a more detailed superintendent's update um, in the next day or two. But people are used to hearing from me every day now. And so I, I don't want, uh, I don't want to uh. Let this opportunity pass without kind of sharing this with you. Uh, information about district happenings that I think are important. So all of you know, based on my communications, that we've had a number of positive cases um, in the district. Uh, primarily in students and a couple in staff members. Uh, and the public health folks have done a tremendous job doing contact tracing and limiting spread. Um, and also staff members in the schools have done a great job. The mitigation measures have really um, kept. Uh, the number of cases uh, to a minimum in terms of school spread. We have had some limited school spread that is going to result in um, some rapid mobile testing. Coming to the district tomorrow um, for a cohort that's been quarantined at one of our elementary schools. Um, and we're looking forward to offering that pre-testing to support staff members and families. Um, who are students who've been affected. So those students affected, it's very limited. It's only the students in the cohort. Uh, and their teachers who can be tested. Um, our COVID nineteen planning and implementation team has been meeting. Uh, and uh, district leadership team meeting to look at options for quarters three and four. That would be the second semester of the year, starting in January, to see if we can find some way to return students. More in-person. More in person if that is safe to do so. Um, and so there'll be a report to you. Um, probably in December about that with some uh, options for. Um, particularly Wednesdays, but also some reshuffling of the schedules on the six through twelve level. The Middlesex League Superintendent's A Ds and principals have meant to talk about winter sports. We still don't have final word from the M I A A on those winter sports. I would say. That I have a lot of um, gratitude and respect for the fall athletes and their coaches. We know of no transmission. Between athletes um, who were playing in the Middlesex League in the fall. Um, and so. That were, those were all outdoor sports. Um, there is a proposal uh, to begin after the winter break. Um, for competition, some limited ten game schedules for. Basketball, hockey, gymnastics, and skiing, both Nordic and Alpine. Um, that is a proposal that has not yet. Um, been approved, but we're hopeful. That should the M I A provisions for safety, particularly for basketball and gymnastics and hockey. Um, pass muster that we could engage in a similar. Winter sports schedule as we did in the fall. Um, I don't have a lot more specific information for you. We'll ask Mr. Ria to come back and, and share that once we have more information from M I A, but I just wanted to kind of. Let you know that. Fall sports went extremely well. We're hoping to do winter sports. But it really is highly dependent on. What the next few weeks, particularly after the Thanksgiving holiday, bring us in terms of spread. There is a travel advisory for the state. Uh, we are concerned. That there will be a number of people who will travel to states that require them to quarantine. We're concerned about staffing. Some of the other Middlesex League schools have decided to shut down for a few days, mainly to preemptively. Restrict students and teachers from spreading if they. Travel in the, on the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, some are also doing this around the uh, December holiday. Um, and so. Right now I have no plans to shut down, nor would I ask you to. Um, unless I thought it was required and public health recommended it. And so if you're hearing rumors that we're going to close down the week after Thanksgiving, right now I have no plans to do so or ask you to. Um, some districts have announced that they are. Um, I'm happy to take feedback about that. Um, but. Every day is like gold. Every day I'm in the schools and I see students. If we're able to staff. And it's safe to do so, I think we should stay with them. Um, and the last uh, advice that I'm going to ask parents to consider. Is we've had a number of. Requests for cohort changes from remote to hybrid or vice versa. We've accommodated most of those at the elementary level without a big delay. Um, but we're now seeing people who would like to travel or go away for part of the winter. Um, and wanna go remote and then come back hybrid. What I'm going to tell. Um, parents is that. Um, if they make a change, it has to be for the rest of the year because the staffing implications are just too complex and. Um, and requires, it may require us to hire additional staff to meet their requests. And so I would ask people to. Delay until we propose a new schedule for January if possible. Um, and if they really are committed to moving, say, from hybrid to remote, to understand that that might require. Um, them to stay remote for the rest of the year. It also requires at the six through twelve level. A complete schedule change. Um, and at the elementary level and likely at the high school level as well, all new teachers. Um, and it's just, it's highly disruptive. And unless people really need to do so, I prefer they stay in their same, their current um, model. Um. But, so I'm going to be putting out some advice about that. We will try to accommodate people if they are set on changing models. But um, it's, it's, you know, something that I would prefer they wait until. We put a new model before school committee for consideration to see what that might look like in January. So just kind of a heads up about what I'm going to be sharing with the community and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there questions about anything that Dr. Evans just mentioned to us in her superintendent's report? Ms. Bergstrom?
Dr. Evans, I heard some parent questions about. Um, and this may be for, to bring back to Jen Murphy. District requirements on families to quarantine who've traveled over Thanksgiving or. Um, so when they come back, uh, you know, are they, what are students and families. Required to do? What are we asking them to do to help keep schools open and the community safe?
Right, right. Well, I think that's, that's two, two important questions. First is. Um. Like many of you, I will be having Thanksgiving home with my three children. And it's ironic because it's the first time in sixty years of my life on this planet that I've not had Thanksgiving with my siblings. Um, which is like kind of shocking. We've had a good run every single year since I was born. I've eaten with my siblings and my parents before they passed recently. And so, but I won't be this year. Because I don't wanna put anybody at risk. And so we will all survive and will be sad and, and will move on. People who are traveling. I would ask them to think twice about it if they're at all able not to. Um, so that's an ask, but not a requirement. I sent something out, I think, on the tenth. Of uh, November that had a list of what, what the quarantine requirements are, and I'll send that out again specifically. About quarantining and testing and a link to the list of states because it seems to keep changing. Um, and so I would encourage people to stay home. Um, the Canadian Thanksgiving happens in October, and if you've seen all the graphs. There were huge spikes in Canada after the holidays. I don't wanna see that here. I don't wanna have to close. I mean, as Lori Kirby said earlier. Teachers are absent this year for a variety of reasons with illness and childcare and. Um, quarantining not related to exposure at school. Um, and if we just have a few more cases at each, a few more absences at each school, I can't staff the school. Um, I just don't, I simply don't have enough. Um, adults to keep uh, schools safely open. And so we're asking our teachers to sacrifice, we're asking our community members to sacrifice. And I will send out more specific information in my update about quarantining or testing requirements if you do travel out of state.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, any other questions about um, Dr. Evans superintendent report?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. I apologize. I'm not able to raise my hand on the phone right now. Uh. I, I, a question that I wish Ms. Murphy was with us in the meeting, but. Um, are we aware of what the rate of false positive and false negatives are with the specific rapid testing that the state is gonna make available to us? And is that gonna be communicated to uh, to families? And is that, is it an, are we working with uh? An acceptable rate of uh, false positives or false negatives with, I understand that rapid test is just not as accurate as P C R.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Uh, Dr. Evans, this was not something we specifically talked about. Um, and I know you're gonna probably give us an update at a future meeting. Um, but if uh, if you're able to answer Mr. Nixon's question without going too deeply into a topic that we didn't really have as a discussion item, or you really presented. I, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So the purpose of the, the rapid, the rapid in, in um, mobile testing is that they come rapidly. Um, I don't think they use the rapid test. I think they use a, a regular, the same nasal swab test that. Um, when we send students to their physician. Uh, it's not to get a quick, it's not to get a quick result, it's to get an accurate result. Um, and these students are quarantined in any case. Um, and as are the adults. Um. If it's used more in a more widespread fashion. Um. It could be used as an indicator of whether the transmission has spread. Beyond one classroom if there are also students who are positive in that classroom. But if you look at the criteria for the mobile. Um, uh, testing unit. Uh, they haven't used it much across the state because they're pretty restrictive. On who can be tested and what will generate that. And I had to spend some time. With a epidemiologist from the Department of Public Health at the state level to convince them to come out. Uh, and offer this testing to our district. And so. Um, that's different from the um, Abbott. Uh. Quick res, quick tests that they're going to offer that have a. Um. An accuracy rate somewhere between ninety eight, ninety nine percent. Uh, that are, that could be used in our schools for symptomatic folks. Uh, as a, a first test, but our public health department only takes the most accurate testing. Um, and, and not these uh, you know, quick tests that. Uh, give you some indication about whether um, you might be positive and try to put your mind to these. So I believe that the tests that the state is offering. Um, tomorrow are acceptable to public health, but in any case, those students are already quarantined for the period, whether they're. Positive or not. It's really meant to get an indication of how widespread. Um, spread might be if people were exposed at school.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Evans. And I, 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 I wasn't sure if Mr. Nixon was referring to the Abbott test. Which we haven't really discussed in detail at this table. Um, and I presume we will in the coming weeks at some point. Which would be for symptomatic, so that for people whose pre-test probability was higher than for just general population where the pre-test probability is fairly low. So um, but again, something to discuss this, this future time. Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I, so I think in, in some of the discussions, I think what I've been hearing is the, the word uh, rapid. Used as an adjective. So I was just trying to get clarification. On that, but it, it sounds as though maybe what the state is offering, it, it's just like an accelerated, it's a P C R test with a rush on it or something. Which uh, so kind of a little more reassuring.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr.
I'll report back and let you know um, how it goes and whether we, how quickly we're able to get results. If we have to use it in the future, that would be helpful to know.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um. Seeing no additional questions or comments from the committee, I would um, thank you for your update. Um, I would move on to future agenda items. I would like to point out before we review the future agenda items, just in case there's any confusion, future agenda items does not necessarily mean that. Items that we will cover at our most, um, the next meeting. It may be a future meeting. So sometimes you might see something on there that's um, still several weeks out before we will report on it. Um, we have the Lynch School Building Project Update. I asked you at our last meeting to give us a very high level update, and I appreciate that. We have mascot and logo update. I think everyone in town. Has seen some, or at least everyone in the district has seen some of the emails coming out about the mascot and logo changes. Superintendent's goals, um. Uh, Dr. Evans, can you give us a timeframe when you think we'll be seeing that? Will that be in a couple of meetings? Will that be in December, do you think? Or do you imagine that in early January?
No, I think I'll have something on uh, December first.
Thank you. Um, we have a fiscal year twenty two budget development process and timeline. Um, you mentioned that earlier, the timeframe for that. Um, but obviously we'll get more detail of that. Health update at our next meeting. The um, Director of Public Health will be at our meeting. To answer questions that we may have and give us an update. Um, I think I heard you say that Mr. Levine was going to be giving us a mental health. Um, needs of, of, for our students update at our next meeting. Is that the anticipation? Thank you. And I've also received a request from our committee, a committee member that we have. Um, what I'll refer to as. Um. COVID update. We had a long time, we had a return to school. Update that was sort of recurring um, item on our agenda each week. We have returned to school. So in a sense, we no longer have a return to school need. But I think there's certainly a desire of um, some committee members to be able to have that as an item so that we can discuss. Um, items related to COVID nineteen as they impact the school. So I'd like to add that, um. Sort of add that as a recurring item, not necessarily requesting that you have a presentation on that each week. But that we have it there so that in case committee members want to have questions, it doesn't have to take place only in the superintendent's report. So. Ms. Bollinger?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think one of the other items that Dr. Evans had mentioned was an update in a few months about revolving accounts.
Revolving accounts? Thank you. And I would uh, add that I also heard that we'll have an update on winter sport. Not all of these items need to be um, their own agenda item. Some of them will simply be a superintendent's, a part of superintendent's update, but certainly something. Um, as important as giving us updates on COVID nineteen. It's nice to be able to give notice to the um, the general public so they can um, know what we're gonna be talking about. With that, I would move on to our next meeting dates. I also wanna give a heads up here because um, there was maybe some confusion. At the last meeting I proposed, and then I reached out to each of the committee members. That we host our evening meetings remote as we're doing now because we often, um, and tonight was no exception, have multiple members. Who cannot come to our evening meeting. And uh, we wanna have the most effective meetings as possible. So moving forward through the winter, and then we'll re- set, reconsider in the spring, our evening meetings will be remote. Our daytime meetings will still be in person. If we can get four of the six of us, excuse me, five of the six of us in person, that would be. Including Dr. Evans, five of the six of us, if we can meet at Windcam, we will um, continue to have the daytime meetings. Um, at Windcam. Uh, our next meeting is December first, that's two weeks from today. That'll be a nine thirty A M. meeting. We have a meeting on December fifteenth, that'll be a six P M. meeting. And then we will um, meet after the holidays, the winter holidays on January fifth, and that'll again be a nine thirty A M. meeting. Seeing any additional, no additional discussion. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Uh, I will take that as a second. Thank you. Uh, a roll call vote. Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, the chair votes aye, the vote's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Um, have a great evening and uh. We will see you all in two weeks. Have a great Thanksgiving as well. Be careful, be safe. Do everything you're in the right.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.